Started. Starting with number one, citizens' concerns. Is there anybody here who would like to bring up a concern that is not otherwise listed on our agenda? Usually we don't have a fight at all over this. You could just turn the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Jim Yarren, 248 Central Street. I've been a long-term member of the Transportation Advisory Committee, and I wanted to ask a question and make a statement. So my concern is this, is that we have an advisory, Transportation Advisory Committee that doesn't seem to have any effect or is not considered, its advice is not considered. And in point, I want to show these are the three options that we considered for the current or the new bus that's going around town. And these were vetted and discussed at a meeting with Doug and Franny, Doug Halli and Franny. And we came up with a plan, and it was changed without any consultation with the committee. And after that, we said, let's, you know, let's have a better process and find out what's going on with this. And after that, it was changed again, and substantially changed. The first time it was changed, it was extended for another half mile, for another mile or so, another 10, 15 minutes for each cycle, maybe 20, I don't know, which would obviously change other route factors. And the second time, because of the first change, the second time, it was shortened, so a part that had already been discussed, which my personal opinion, this hasn't been discussed in a committee or otherwise, my personal opinion was a very essential part of the route was taken out. And I want to say specifically, I don't agree or disagree with the changes that were made, but the fact that no one came back to the advisory committee, what do we have a Transportation Advisory Committee for if not to talk about these very essential and fundamental transportation issues? Which was already on the table, and no one came and talked to us. So the question is, why do we have an advisory, Transportation Advisory Committee? And should it be more than an advisory committee and actually have some teeth? And I saw, I guess that's the question. The statement is, if transportation is so essential, and I'm just going to offer that as a given, because everything we've been doing recently in town here, a huge percentage and part of it has to do with transportation. Why don't, why doesn't the town have a better focus on the administration of the transportation And those two probably go together. So it's really the process I'm concerned with, and the details, which can, you know, be the subject of hours and hours of discussion, as they should be, can't be discussed here. That's why we need committees, and the way our frankly, less-than-efficient, always, government works here in town, is we do things through committee and boards. And so if we're going to do it and go through that long process, let's do it correctly. And I'd like to hear your responses and have an opportunity to discuss.
Thanks, Jim. So we can't discuss this too much just because it wasn't posted on our agenda, but I will ask if Franny wants, as our sort of liaison to TAC and transportation person, if you want to briefly respond, and perhaps it's something we can put on a future agenda to actually discuss.
Yeah, I'll just say that I have often, for many years, had the same questions. I felt like we didn't have teeth, and I feel like that's a problem with many of our advisory boards. And so I sometimes wonder if we need to review, maybe it should be on a future agenda, review the process by which the Board of Selectmen responds to advisory board's suggestions. And with regards to the specific, the route formation, I know I have been querying Doug Halli a lot and learning from them. You know, I kept saying, well, wait, why is this changed and why is this? And I've been learning that, you know, they've been till all hours trying to figure out a route that works and works within an hour. And there are things that I would do differently, and I'll say them later tonight, but I'm going with, you know, the company that runs Crosstown Connect, I'm going with their experience. I mean, I.
Well, here's the thing. We're the town.
I'm understanding it.
Franny, this is the problem. We are the town and the taxpayers. They don't tell us what we are doing with our money and what we want to do. We tell them, and there's a discussion and a dialogue. Now, the problem is, is that now we have a bus, a very important and expensive bus that is going to go up to the senior center. Maybe that's a great thing. I don't know. The seniors already have transportation. But instead of going down to Lower Great Road with all that commercial and, let's say, moderate-income residential places, which could really use transportation and doesn't have a dedicated, and I don't know, I don't know the issues, but the fact that this kind of decision was made after we had sat down in a meeting for hours and gone over the routes and talked about it without any consultation, and it was done by Fiat, is absolutely wrong.
Okay, so I'll just say again, we can't go much further just because it's not posted on our agenda. So thank you for bringing to our attention, and we'll talk about putting this on a, on a future agenda.
How about instead of putting on an agenda, why don't you, since this is already known that there's a problem with advisory committees not being listened to? We've told Franny this, probably everyone here has heard it. I know Peter's heard it because I've told him before. For example, when the train station parking lot was discussed, instead of going to the advisory committee and putting it in them, an entirely new committee was formed to discuss it, and then they dropped the idea of the parking lot, and they took up the idea of the station. Fine, we got a beautiful station, almost done. But you know what? That's another really big example of what happened. And why do we have a Transportation Advisory Committee if, and this is not something that should be put on an agenda to discuss if we should change it, it should, there should be action. Because it's been out there long enough. How do you get something to be acted on instead of just discussed?
Well, again, I can't do it tonight because we can't discuss anything that's not.
Well, it's a process of government. I'm just asking. If it's a known problem, how does it get dealt with instead of just discussed and pushed onto another agenda for another year or two or whatever? How? Anybody?
We really can't discuss things that aren't on our agenda under open meeting law.
No, it's a citizen's concern about how government is supposed to work in here, and that's all I'm asking for a response to.
Okay. Janet?
I, yeah, this discussion can't go on. I mean, I think that I have worked as liaison with committees that have expressed some of the same frustration, and I think it frankly, the regard for the advisory role of a committee depends, it really depends on the committee members, it also depends on the liaison. I mean, I, I do make an effort to take into consideration my advisory board opinions. I mean, we just had an advisory board that put through Town Meeting the stormwater bylaw that they've been laboring on for years, and I was the liaison through that whole process and prodding them toward the end. But anyhow, but, you know, it got done, and I really deferred heavily to them because they, they were really much more into it than I could be because I had other things to do. So it varies. I think that it is something, as Katie says, we could, not to talk about it for your benefit, but to talk about it just from our purpose, for our purposes as a process, procedure perspective. If there is an issue, we need to talk about it, and we have to really talk about it in open meeting. And we do sometimes have meetings where we talk about procedural issues that aren't, you know, dealing with specific issues or projects. So, no, I mean, I appreciate your bringing this to our attention because it's not the first time I've heard the concern raised, and it's not with regard to TAC, so.
I did. I mean, it's really difficult for me to come to any of these meetings because I work, I get home typically at 7:30 every evening, so, you know, I got out early today. So obviously, I can't be a part of that process of discussing the process, but you could, on your own, form a subcommittee to study it and decide that right now in open meeting.
We can't because it's not posted on this meeting. But again, and, you know, I think if we will talk about it and
Of course you could.
And put it on a future agenda to discuss the procedures, and even if you can't, I mean, I understand it's, I work in Boston as well, it's hard to get here, but, you know, I would encourage you as well, if we do put this on a future agenda, to send us emails, and you can participate in other ways than, than just coming to the meeting.
All right. I'll sit down. I'd be interested in what Peter has to say, and, you know, anybody else?
I'll reiterate, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and again, we'll discuss putting it on a, on a future agenda. Okay, there was another citizens' concern?
Good evening. I'm Gina Manilin, and I live at 7 Kelly Road. And I guess I've come to the Board of Selectmen to ask you what recourse we have, if we have For four weeks now, down behind CVS, we have had some, in that site, they are taking down the ledge. So for four weeks, six days a week, nine hours a day, we have had a sledgehammer, or whatever they call it, that breaks rock, just pounding, 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 for nine hours a day. The only day we get off is Sunday, which means you can't go outside for very long. And now, I understand that they're really running against the deadline. They're trying to get this work done before winter comes. But it seems to me that somewhere in this, there should be a balance about the people who live here and the people who want to get work done in expeditious fashion. Now, I'm, I'm a tenth of a mile away from the site. When you consider all the high density that's within, a tenth of a mile of that site, you really are affecting a lot of people. So do we have any recourse? I know we don't have a signed bylaw. I know it's been worked on and flushed many times. Do we have any recourse whatsoever, or are we just poppers and pawns here?
So I'm going to encourage you to send an email to the town manager and to the Board of Selectmen, and we can review, they do have a special permit which limits the number of hours they can work. Noise is regulated actually at a state level and not at a town level, but, you know, we're happy to look into that and verify whether or not they're working within their permit and perhaps try to reach out to them. I mean, I know I was just down there tonight and it was.
One other question I would ask is within the special permit, I mean, given that we do Kelly's Corner, you know, every five years, whether we need it or not, so there's always going to be construction or something going forward, can we make sure that we have something in place as buildings get torn down and streets get widened or narrowed or whatever's going to happen, that the people who live in that area have some quality of life here? I would really like to see that effort being made, because I think it's important for everybody.
I appreciate that, and we'll certainly take it under consideration when we do any permits going forward. And, you know, again, I don't recall the exact hours listed in their permit, but we'll certainly check that. And if you could, like I said, just send us an email to
I would be most happy to do it.
Peter?
Yeah, I just want to mention that you do have a representative on the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee that's coming up with the new zoning bylaw that will govern future development, assuming the Town Meeting passes it in the spring. That's Eric Solomon. There will be, there are, there are meetings planned with the neighborhood to get input on the new zoning guidelines, so.
I know, but as to this gentleman's point of view, there may, there may be guidelines brought forward by this group of people, but whether they get implemented and brought forward is another step forward. So the real issue in my mind is execution. It's not planning, it's execution. If we, we have something that says, are you within the special permit? Who's executing to find out if that is true? You know what I mean? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other citizens' concerns?
Yeah, I have a totally unrelated citizen's concern. I complained about the lack of a stop sign at the bottom of No Name Road across from CVS. I called up the police station, actually, and specifically spoke to someone about it. That was about two or three weeks ago. There's still no stop sign there. What's that about? Can you, can someone on this board call the police station and say, why isn't there a stop sign at the bottom of that road?
I'm a punter, Steve.
The Traffic Safety Officer of the Police Department has to make a determination. You just don't put stop signs up. It has to meet certain warrants under state traffic code. So it's based on number of accidents, et cetera, so I, I can inquire with them, but we just can't put up stop signs without some document and.
There used to be a stop sign there. They put up a strictly.
It's also a private road.
I don't know that that matters, but I just, you know, you are now all on notice, okay? Police station, police were on notice, so when there's an accident, we're all on notice. I can't do anything about it. You all can.
Okay. Last call for citizens' concerns.
Ask the lawyer if you want me to write you an email about that to remind you, or actually, you can do something, because you, you do have someone taking minutes?
Yes. Okay. Okay. I will do chairman's update. Actually, it's after 7:10, so I'm going to read this hearing, and then I'll come back. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in November 16, 2015, at 7:10 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room at Town Hall on the application of National Grid for an insulation and maintenance of approximately 700 feet more or less of four-inch gas main in Hayward Road, from the existing four-inch gas main at Andrew Drive Easterly to the proposed two-inch gas main at Hutchinson Way, and approximately 35 feet more or less of two-inch gas main in Hutchinson Way, from the proposed four-inch gas main in Hayward Road northerly to serve lots C, 1, 2, and 3. Petition-accompanied plans can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Okay, we will come back to that in just a minute. I just want to do the chairman's update really quickly. Okay, so thank you to everybody who attended Town Meeting last Tuesday. I think it was a successful Town Meeting. I always wish there were more people there than there were, but I appreciate everybody who, who came out, and I'm pleased that we were able to keep it to one night, so it was good. Some upcoming events in town, there is a CPR AED training on Monday, November 30, from 9 to 4 PM at the Public Safety Facility, and you can register for that on the town's website, I believe there's a link on the homepage. The Acton-Boxborough Regional High School's courses, 21st Annual Cabaret Night is this Friday and Saturday, November 20th and 21st, at 7 PM in the high school auditorium. Tickets are $12 and can be purchased in advance. It's at either at lunch, but I assume most of us are not at lunch at high school, or at red, white, and brew. So, or you can get a limited number, will be sold at the door, so, sir. Hot event. And Green Acton will have a presentation on Acton's water this Wednesday, November 18, at 7 PM at Half Moon Hill. And then our next meeting is December 7. We have a number of topics, including a presentation from the Acton-Boxborough United Way on their community needs assessment, and since we will not be meeting before then, we just want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. All right, Mr. Manager.
I'll defer.
You'll defer? Okay, you're good. Excellent. Okay, so we have read the public hearing. Is there somebody from National Grid here? Would you like to introduce yourself and the?
Yeah, my name is Dennis Regan. I'm the permanent representative from National Grid, and tonight, National Grid hereby respectfully requests your consent to install and maintain approximately 700 feet more or less of four-inch gas main in Hayward Road Acton, from the existing four-inch gas main at Andrew Drive Easterly to the proposed two-inch gas main at Hutchinson Way, and approximately 35 feet more or less of two-inch gas main in Hutchinson Way, from the proposed four-inch gas main in Hayward naughtily to serve lot C, lot 1, lot 2, and lot 3.
Okay. So I believe we have people here who have some questions in the audience, but are there initially any questions or comments from the board? Okay. My only question is, this is a new development? Yes or no?
I'm not sure if it's a new development or not. I believe it is. Where I wasn't, where we didn't run the gas main down Hutchinson Way, it's probably a private way.
Okay. Okay, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Introduce yourself, sir.
Hi, I'm Jim Snyder Grant, 18, Half Moon Hill. I just wanted to speak in favor of not adding new natural gas lines in Acton. We've had a lively discussion about this in Green Acton. You'll see some of us in the audience here tonight. Since you're considering allowing some new gas distribution lines to be extended into parts of Acton, it seemed time to share that conversation with you and get you involved in it. Part of Green Acton's mission is to protect our environment for future generations, and that's the issue with new gas lines. As a green community, Acton has taken on the challenge of reducing its climate change impact by reducing energy use and emissions of greenhouse gases. Natural gas, composed primarily of methane, is a potent natural, is a potent greenhouse gas, as the EPA explains, pound for pound, the comparative impact of methane on climate change is more than 25 times greater than that of CO2 over a 100-year period. Every time we bring in a new house to a gas line in Acton, we lock in another natural gas user. And once there's natural gas to a house, the economics of the situation are going to mean that it's going to be really hard for that user to stop using that fossil fuel being pumped into their house. The urgency of doing what we can about climate change strongly suggests that the first thing we should be doing is to stop making things worse. Now, the utilities will tell us that the cleanly, that cleanly burned natural gas emits very little or no methane into the air, but what they leave out is all the leaks along the way, in both production and distribution. This year, finally, the court action and the threat of court action compelled the Massachusetts Natural Gas Utilities to release information on leaks in their distribution system that they failed to fix over the years. That's 20,000 leaks in Massachusetts, 171 leaks in Acton. The gas companies work to a pretty low standard under their current regulations. They only fix leaks that create a risk of explosion. The rest just leak out into the air and poison our future. The cost of that leaked gas is just rolled into the rates we customers pay. So as a first step, I would encourage the town to contact our legislators and the state DPU to express the need to change the regulations so that these leaks get fixed. Now, near as I can tell from the maps, and I'm speaking both of this current hearing and the hearing that's coming up next, the two areas in Acton to be considered tonight for new pipelines are for new construction. So we aren't displacing oil or coal heat, which is one of the few possibly justifiable reasons to bring in natural gas. By that, I mean that depending on how you estimate the rate of natural gas leaks during production and transmission, heating with oil or coal, both have a somewhat higher greenhouse gas impact than heating with natural gas. But new construction in Acton, because of our stretch energy code, creates the sort of well-insulated, efficient buildings that are perfect candidates for mini-split heat pumps and other solutions that don't require that fossil fuels be piped into houses. So I'm here tonight because I think it's time for the building and planning departments to tell developers that come in with houses that require natural gas, you know, citizens are showing up to speak up against adding new natural gas pipelines. And you might have an easier time if you choose an alternative fuel source, and you'd be helping Acton's carbon footprint. And as long as they're providing that kind of helpful information, it'd be nice if they could say, ask them if they oriented the roofs to allow solar and plan the landscaping to, to allow the solar to get sunlight. Now, if, when you think about a transition to renewable fuel future, you could summarize it into three different buckets. Use less energy. Switch the energy that you can from piped-in fossil fuels to electricity, and then make that electricity mix cleaner and upgrade the grid to make that possible. The town has done a lot in two of those areas. We've, we've, we've supported the Solarize program, you've, you've helped build that very large solar array on the landfill. There's all the efficiency and renewable projects that the town has taken on as part of the Green Communities Act. But there's a missing step here. So I would recommend that the staff and the Board of Selectmen take up the matter of new gas infrastructure as part of a larger discussion of how Acton, as a municipality, can best contribute to a transition to a renewable energy in all the aspects of our municipal operations, including permitting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Deborah?
Deborah Symes, 109 Concord Road. I'm speaking for myself, even though I'm a Green Acton member. I'm going to read it because I won't remember it all. The natural gas industry has worked hard over the last few years at what I consider its greenwashing campaign, which aims to convince the public that natural gas is a bridge fuel and that we have a natural gas crisis. This manufactured crisis in New England is primarily about regulators and industries' failure to have planned for replacing some of the capacity that's being lost due to welcome, the welcome decommissioning of coal-powered plants. Regulators and industry have panicked because they've been asleep at the wheel and have moved to replace that capacity, and way more actually, because they've been planning for a significant overbuilding, by replacing that capacity with more of the same, which means fossil fuel, largely means fossil fuel infrastructure for natural gas. And I'm saying all this because I want a context that connects what we do here in town to the bigger sort of issues and discussion around natural, natural gas. Every time we permit new construction with natural gas feeds or allow the building of natural gas pipelines or permit new natural, natural gas storage facilities, we indirectly encourage fracking, a technology that wreaks all manner of havoc, including contamination of aquifers, destabilizing of geology, and result in earthquakes, compromise human health because of the toxic chemicals it uses, extreme levels of water consumption for the technology, and significant greenhouse gas contributions at well sites from flaring methane. Every time we allow more fossil fuel infrastructure, we lock ourselves into coming decades of fossil fuel use and worsening disruption of the climate. This isn't necessary. There are any number of ways to transition to a renewables energy portfolio, including efficiency measures, demand response, boosts on renewables projects, and development of a new green grid. People have too often believed the greenwashing message of natural gas as a bridge fuel and think that natural gas will make their electricity cheaper this year or next year. If we buy into this idea, that will be a short-lived and narrow savings, because here's what it really will do. It will tie us into 19th century technology for decades to come. It will encourage more high-risk natural gas pipelines. It will make ratepayers pay for an outdated and destructive technology. It will hurt investment in renewables. It will advance what I consider the awful fracking industry. It will indirectly mobilize fuel for global markets, and it will endanger public safety, conservation land, aquifers and wells, and agricultural soils. At all levels, including locally, we need to stand for a renewable energy future and not for a planet-warming, polluting, and dangerous technology from two centuries ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Are there any others? Are there any other citizen comments? Okay, questions or comments from the board? Oh. Where are you pointing at somebody? Oh, yeah. If you could just come up to the microphone and say your name and address, please.
I'm Deborah Hassan. I live at 100 Hayward Road. Two years ago, our road got dug up, and it took over a year for it to be repaved completely again. When I got this notice that it was going to get dug up for a little piece of gas line, and I totally support the comments much more articulately said than any I could, about the purpose of the pipeline, I once went down to the town hall and asked, you know, "So when will a sewer get to Hayward Road?" And my answer was, "Not in your lifetime." But here we have this very discreet, disruptive piece of not-okay energy, which is going to rip up this road again. I don't know, does anyone have a timeline on how... I don't even want it, but even if it does go through, how long would it take with all the machines and the ripping and the cops saying, "Stop, you can't go here"? We couldn't even get into our own driveway for a while. So I have that question about the logistics of the disruption at the risk of being... bringing it out to my little house. Does anybody...
Dennis, do you have any answer about the timeline, when the proposed work would start and end?
Well, if we were able to get a grant of location, the next step would be to make an appointment for a pre-construction conference with your public work director, and he would tell us when we could start. Most towns do not allow work in the winter months. And with the pre-construction conference also, there would be discussed the start times, how many police officers require us to bring steel plates that if we're digging in the road and somebody has to get in and out of their driveway for the half an hour or an hour that they're going to be digging in front of them, they could put the plates over that so the customers or the people could get in and out of those driveways to go where they have to go.
And I will note, we do have a memo from our engineering department that they would recommend that if approved, the construction would not take place until after March 15th or whenever their winter season ends. As you noted, we typically don't allow construction during the winter. Janet?
Could you clarify, assuming that we were to... if we would authorize the work to start not before March 15th, how long?
How long would the job take?
Yeah, based on the amount of...
Seven hundred feet on the... we... when work starts, we do anywhere from 80 to 120 feet a day gas main installed.
And that's five days a week?
And then with this, they would get the main installed down to Hutchinson Way, okay? And then they would work on Hutchinson Way once all the gas is in on Hayward Road.
So can you... so that I don't have to do the calculations, can you give me a ballpark figure of time or days or weeks?
I would say, to complete it, probably four to six weeks.
Okay. And then in that...
No, I'm sorry. I would say four weeks.
Four weeks, and that... does that include repaving or resurfacing?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to add, with regard to your comment about the work that disrupted Hayward Road for a while, that was the... if I recall correctly, that was a Water District. They were installing new pipes, and, yeah, there were some problems. They were running into the problems, which meant that it took a lot longer. Yeah, we were getting a lot of angry calls blaming us for the work, and we didn't even know about it. So the town manager was sort of on the hot seat, whether or not he wanted to be, and had to explain that, "Well, it's actually not our project. And by the way, Water District, what are you doing over there? Let us know what's going on." So, yeah, they probably should have notified us so that we would have been on alert. But, yeah, that wasn't involving gas pipelines. So that's all. Thank you.
Any comments? Peter?
I just want to... let me first ask Green Acton, what fuel drives mini-split heat pumps?
Thanks for asking, Peter. That's an example of electric technology.
Okay. I mean, I'm kind of just... this took... set me back because I always... you know, I have natural gas in my house. I thought I was... I got a very 95% efficient burner and thought I was doing fine. So I don't know what to do. I'm as committed an environmentalist as anyone, but even with electricity, you try to put up a wind farm, and people don't want to look at it. So it gets defeated. So, I mean, I'm sure this debate could go on forever. I can't put solar on my house because there are so many trees around my house. I'd have to cut down dozens of trees, so... and to put solar up, I mean, a lot of developers clear-cut the property already, so, I mean, this is a little off-topic here, obviously, but I'm not sure cutting down all the trees in town is the answer either. But so, you know, the solutions are oftentimes hard to figure out. But I would encourage you, if you want the town, to set a new policy on this, which I might support, to get the grassroots, you know, going. I'd ask you to speak to the Green Advisory Board, which I'm asking to... or they're interested in, and we're going to ask the Selectmen to kind of expand their scope to take in a lot more green stuff. But even the EDC, I would like to hear input from. I can't make a decision on changing a policy like this without, you know, a broader input from different constituencies in town. So that would be helpful to me. The other question I guess I have is, what legal authority do we have to turn down permits to lay down utility lines, you know, based on environmental concerns?
I'm not sure. I mean, it is in the town's right of way, so we can say yes or no, but I've not run into that question before.
Any questions or comments? Oops, sorry.
I mean, I think it's a good issue to raise, and I think we... certainly the town should consider it, and I think we could consider writing a letter. Certainly, it sounds like to me the best solution is to get the leaks fixed and get the DPDU to beef up their regulations. I have no problems with supporting that, so...
First, Franny.
I just wanted to echo... you said it very nicely, because I do appreciate you bringing it up, and it makes me think we should look into what we can do proactively. I wouldn't feel comfortable saying no out of the blue suddenly when we've been going along. I know that's not a good reason to not say no, but I just think, not knowing... I just wouldn't be comfortable just saying, "No, stop, you can't do this," suddenly change the method. But to work proactively, I totally agree. And you're bringing up... I've had requests, which I mentioned to Katie, about our board looking at the state law that's being proposed about gas leaks. And so if a group of people wants to push toward that, that would be useful also.
Janet, you had additional?
I know that Representative Cory Acton's has a periodic district meeting with her Selectmen reps and school committee reps, and she has brought up this issue of gas leaks as being a big problem, and I... she hasn't... we haven't talked about it lately, but, you know, I could ask her office to tell us what's going on with it and what chances this law has of actually passing. You know, I don't know anything about it, but, you know, if there is something that either is on the books or it's near to being on the books, it's something that we could, you know, look into and report back for the benefit of the public. Because that is my biggest concern. I, like Peter, live in a house that's served by gas, and I love it. You know, if we do any work that involves digging, we always call Dig Safe so that we're not in the news about blowing up our house. But, yeah, I think I would need to understand a little bit more about, you know, sort of what we can do locally to make a difference. The indirect effect collectively of our decisions here is, you know, I think it would... we'd have to be able to say these things to the public with a straight face, and I don't think that we have enough information. So I, you know, I certainly am not going to... I'm going to be open to learning, but obviously, I'm also not going to tell people right now that, "Well, sorry, you know, you're going to have to go install heat pumps," because I know that my husband had heat pumps when he was in a house in Maryland, and he said, "Well, you know, they work in some climates better than others." And I wouldn't want to limit other people's options without some good grounds, so...
I mean, if it sounds like people are very supportive of looking at this gas leaks legislation, perhaps we put it on a future agenda. And, you know, if you're willing to reach out to our legislators, believes Senator Eldridge supports both of those bills, but it's worth... yeah, I mean, if you would reach out to them, and perhaps we can talk about it in the future and if there's a way, and if the board wants to support this or thinks the town should in some way. And I'll just add my thanks to Jim and Deborah and to Green Acton for bringing it to our attention. I think a lot of these we end up viewing as just sort of procedural, and so it was, you know, interesting to get the email and actually be forced to think about these issues that I think, you know, you think about in the broader sense. We don't have the issues of fracking necessarily in Acton or in this general area, or maybe we do. I hear about it more, you know, Pennsylvania, New York, some of the mid-Atlantic. And so, you know, you think about it there, and you have concerns with sort of the large transmission pipelines, but kind of don't then apply it on this smaller level. So I appreciated it being brought to our attention. I'll just sort of echo, I think, you know, my fellows like me, I think it is worth us talking about in a broader sense in the future, in the near future, and being more proactive about these. But it is tough, because I'm torn about it, but I, you know, I would feel a bit uncomfortable just kind of blanket opposing this tonight without, you know, others have said, without kind of understanding a little bit more about what our purview is and what the other... some of the other consequences might be of this. So... does anybody want to make a motion? I know, we're all jumping at it.
I move...
We're lucky.
I move that we support this... are we just talking about the 710 one?
Yes.
The Hayward Road. We approve the gas main installation by National Grid on Hayward Road. And I would like to amend that, saying that we will look into both the legislation going on and the opportunities we have for incentives to have other forms of energy in new construction.
And I'm just wondering if you could put in your...
The March 15th?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you could put in your motion, the request from engineering, that construction occur either after March 15th or at a date approved by the DPW.
Yes. And according to the engineer, that the work has to be done after March 15th or at a date that the DPW in town approves.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right, I'm a little quite tardy in reading the notice for 720. "But a public hearing of the Acton Board of Selectmen will be held on Monday, November 16th, 2015, at 7:20 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room of Town Hall for National Grid to install and maintain approximately 1,570 feet more or less of two-inch main in Alexandria Way from the existing four-inch gas main in Harris Street, northerly to the end of Alexander Way, and approximately 1,025 feet more or less of two-inch gas main in Reeve Street from the proposed two-inch gas main in Alexander Way to the end of Reeve Street Road." Would you like to introduce this one?
I'm still Dennis Regan from National Grid.
Nothing in particular you want to mention about this?
National Grid hereby respectfully requests your consent to install and maintain approximately 1,570 feet more or less of two-inch gas main in Alexandria Way, Acton, from the existing four-inch gas main at Harris Street, northerly to the end of Alexandria Way, and approximately 1,025 feet more or less of two-inch gas main in Reeve Street from the proposed two-inch gas main in Alexander Way to the end of Reeve Street.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board?
Let me just ask a couple of quick questions. Are you an engineer, Dennis?
I'm...
Are you an engineer also?
No, I'm not an engineer, no. I just... I've been with the gas company for 46 years.
Okay. Do you know anything about these leaks, and are these just old gas lines that are...
What we're doing in ours...
Deteriorating?
We... when gas... some of the... we do all sorts of leak surveys, and we're continually replacing old main that was put in without any rust proofing on it back in the '30s, okay? So we're replacing those two-inch Bier Steel gas mains, and we're trying to get them, you know, completely out of the system, but there's quite a bit of it in there. And since National Grid took over from Keyspan and Boston Gas, they've been doing very rapidly trying to replace all that, and that's where the leaks come.
Okay. So I assume like double-hulled ships or they carry oil. The new pipe has this rust proofing on it, or it's...
Well, the new pipe is all plastic, okay?
Using PVCs now?
PVC. So what happens is when the 1,500 feet go in and they're melted together, that becomes one pipe. And before any gas goes into that one pipe, they ear-test it. They put 90 pounds of pressure in air, and they set it for a 24, 25-hour period to make sure when they go and take it off, it's still at the same 90 pounds. So that's what they do with the plastic mains.
Okay. Thank you.
Franny?
There was something I didn't understand in the other one, that this one... you said that it took... wait, let me see where I put it. 80 to 120 feet per day, and it was 700 feet, but somehow it came to four weeks. So I was...
Eighty to 120 feet a day, okay? So that... so it's 80 to 120 feet a day. So...
So I thought...
Was that the 700-foot one you're talking about?
Yeah, so I would have thought that would be like a week.
Well, what happens after the main goes in, then they have to put the services in, okay? So that takes a little bit more time. But on that, we won't be putting services on the main drag. We'll be putting them in on that first one, just at the street at the end.
So the main drag would only be bothered for about a week?
Yes, yes. Weather permitting, yes.
Okay.
How long does the resurfacing part take, though? Because it's a week to... or is the week include the, you know, resurfacing everything?
What's that again now?
Is the week just putting it in, or is it... I mean, you know, you're digging down...
They'll put it all in and then test it before they put the gas in it.
No, my question is, how long does it take to resurface the road?
Well, they'll resurface it roughly while the construction's going on, and then at the Public Works Direction, we would complete the restoration. There's all sorts of different methods that we'll use, depending on what the Public Works Director tells us to do.
That's part of why it's... I think I heard two words. I heard "resurfacing" before, but then now I've heard you use the word "servicing," so maybe I might have misheard. I don't know. You did... Did you... you talked about both resurfacing and servicing the houses?
Resurfacing the road is one thing. A service is a small gas line coming in off the main. You have a gas main, then you have a gas service. Resurfacing the road is a different thing.
Okay. Anyway, that's... so, yeah, I don't have any more questions about this. Are there any questions or comments from the audience?
I have a question.
Sure.
The real reason is...
If you could just come up to the microphone for the TV audience.
And I've always wondered this, so this is a great opportunity to find out. Why, after... I don't know if it's always electricity or gas or whatever is put into the street, the utility comes and they resurface the road, they do absolutely, choose your adjective, crappy job. Why can't... I mean, why can't they make it like the street was beforehand? That's all. That's all it is.
Having lived through High Street and the Water District putting in new lines, there's a settling problem. So once you dig a trench and fill it, you've got to let it settle, because if you just paved it right over, it might settle afterwards. So you have to let it settle first before you can put the final pavement on it. That was my understanding.
So then, does the utility come back after it's settled and resurface it so that it's actually nice?
I think so, yeah. The Water District did that to High Street. I'm assuming the electric... or the gas company does that for your project.
And it's all... engineering, you know, it has to approve it all. And it's all, engineering, you know, it has to approve it all.
We restore and replace the, when we're doing the resurfacing, we backfill what we call in six-inch lifts. The gas main is about three feet deep, and it's put in the bed of sand. When we put six inches of fill in, we have a machine that packs it down. Then we put six inches more fill, and we pack it down again. And then we put six inch until we get up to the top of the road where we would grind and inlay or restore, whatever the Public Works Director tells us to do. And if one of our patches is a problem, we fix it. Your Public Works Director works with our contractors and crews on a regular basis.
Any other questions or comments from the board? From the, yep, if you could just come up, just say your name and address, please.
Pete Hauchu, I live in 103 Hayward Row. I just recently moved into the house. I have three concerns. First of all, how long the traffic disruption's gonna be? I mean, I know that, I heard four weeks, I heard six weeks, you know, so I don't know exactly what's the timeframe. Secondly, is that in terms of the cost, is that totally will be borne by National Grid?
Hold on, you have to answer. Can you just ask all your questions, and then I'll ask you to answer, you just have to do it in the microphone.
Yeah, okay, so that's on the cost side, I just don't know that, you know, what is that, the town need to share some costs, or it's totally 100% borne by, you know, paid by National Grid? Yeah.
So Dennis, can you just answer? And could you address, I don't think we actually talked about the expected timeline for this one, I don't know if you have an estimate, because this is quite a bit larger, it seemed.
This Alexandria Reeve, it appears that there are going to be quite a few gas services going on this, so it'll take a little bit longer, but it's on a side street. With this job and the other job, and all jobs with new mains, National Grid is, we cannot put in gas mains unless the customer pays for them. We cannot speculate because of deregulation. So on these jobs, these customers, 23 potential customers on Alexandria Way and Reeve, they got together with marketing and sales and worked out some sort of a contract to pay National Grid to put this gas main in, and that's who pays. And the same situation on the other gas main that I requested.
Yeah, so just to clarify, the town doesn't pay for any of this?
Absolutely not.
Including any of the work on the road, that National Grid pays for all of that?
No.
Any others, if you have a follow-up?
After the gas line put into, installed, is that how often you send the crew out to check whether there's any gas leak or any safety issue? I mean, bear in mind that Hayward is right behind the high school, a lot of kids work, you know, home. So I just don't know, is there any regular, you check that regularly, or just once you put it in, that's it?
What we're putting in is basically one piece of pipe.
You gotta use the microphone. We're on TV.
What we're putting in, basically, at the end of the day, is one piece of plastic pipe. The leaks, if the leak were to come, we would also fix that, but we don't have issues with leaks in plastic pipe.
Thank you. So is there another question? And if you could just say your name and address, please.
I'm Sabra Paney from 6 Alexandria Way. And just a few comments, just to add to all of these things. So one other thing, this is an old development, it's been there for 15 years, and for some reason they didn't put gas in there, instead they put oil. And there's a gas just in the next street over, so it's a parallel street which is Captain Handley, which has gas, and this development somehow didn't have gas, so there are 23 houses, and we have been working on this project by ourselves, working with National Grid to sign up for gas, and it was an ordeal to get them to come up and just put the gas lines, it's been about two years, and finally we are stuck at this point. And so what I would, from our side, at least from the residents, we definitely wanted this line to be put in, and this was last year, we're at this year, and it appears that it's not going to happen this year either, which is also a bit of a concern. So some of the people have gone through furnaces in the meantime and have gone through oil again, so my recommendation would be to help us out here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you give me your address? I have to keep track of this, I'm taking your address, it'll be easier, you don't have to give me your name, just, what's your street address?
6 Alexander.
Okay.
Alexander. Okay, any other questions from the audience? Okay, questions or comments from the board, Franny?
I just want to say, this is fascinating and very useful. I hope you, I think you might have come in after Green Acton made their statements about this project, so the people behind you are from Green Acton and have a letter which you'd be interested in seeing. And I just think it's great, because I always am going through these and thinking, well, is there really a choice? And, you know, it's sort of one of those things that I have to do as selectmen, so it's very useful to bring up all these issues that people are bringing up, so thank you.
Peter?
There's no further discussion, I'll move that we grant the permit for Alexander Way on the conditions that they meet the requirements of the engineering department, not to start the work after March 15th or on a date approved by the DPW, whichever is later.
Second. Okay, any other comments from the board? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and thank you to everybody who brought a number of issues tonight, I think, again, it was very helpful to think about these in a new way. Okay, and I'm a little late again for reading the 7:30 hearing. Okay, the Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on November 16th, 2015, at 7:30 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room. For an order to show cause for an alleged over-service incident at Teamworks Doing Businesses Overtime Bar, 30 Great Road, Acton, on August 28th, 2015. The documentation may be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Is there anybody from Teamworks here tonight? Okay, if you would mind just coming up and introducing yourself real quick?
Sure, I'm Eric Zucker, I represent Teamworks. With me this evening is Tom Moore, who is the president of the facility, Chris Wallace is the general manager, and Ethan Robidoux, who was the bartender on duty at the time. Catherine Milheim, to whom the board's letter was directed, is not here this evening, she has a medical situation going on that made it impossible for her to be here, she was hospitalized last week and can't be out and about. But the folks who are here tonight are here intentionally because they are the most involved with the most knowledge about the incident.
Thank you, and I'm sorry to hear about that. So before we get into this, it's my understanding that there is, you do have some video of the incident that night?
That is correct.
Okay, and so I believe we contacted you earlier today, because our recommendation, my recommendation to the board is that unfortunately we didn't find that out in time to put a notice of an executive session on our agenda, and in order to view that video, we would have to go into executive session, and in the past, we have wanted to do that as it's helped make our decision on these issues. So we're recommending, I'm recommending that we defer this conversation and continue the hearing to our December 21st meeting, so I just want to, first of all, get your comments on that, and then any questions or comments about that from board members.
We want to accommodate the board so that whatever information they need is available to be looked at and reviewed and evaluated, so continuing until the 21st of December will be fine with us.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Are there any questions about that from board members? Okay, any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, then, can I have a motion to continue the hearing to December 21st, 2015, at 8:20 PM?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate you coming tonight and being willing to do this. I'm just gonna ask one of you to sign this form to continue it.
I'll let you sign it.
Okay. Second. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, number four, selectmen's business transportation benchmarks discussion. Doug, are you gonna be handling that? All right, do you have a presentation or just a?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if you would mind just taking some of the business up while I'm...
Sure. Why don't we do the consent agenda to start? So I will read through this, and if anybody would like to hold something, please say hold. Number seven, approval of selectmen issued permits and licenses for 2016, which I'm gonna hold. Number eight, approve waiver of fees American Cancer Society Relay for Life, May 21st to 22nd, 2016. Number nine, use special permit amendment number 04-20-04-397, Teamworks 30 Great Road. Number 10, approve holiday farmer's market sale of wine Coastal Vineyards, November 22nd, 2015, December 20th, 2015. Number 11, accept gift police department. A gift, didn't we approve this? I feel like we approved this at our last meeting, but whatever. I think we actually accepted this gift at our last meeting, but I forgot to look it up, so either way. Gift from Digital Federal Credit Union for a total of $2,500 to provide programs that make a difference in the lives of children in school or after school. Number 12, approve 2016 NARA Beach Group Swimming Rate and Picnic Pavilion Fee. Number 13, approve meeting minutes, October 19th, 2015. Number 14, accept gift planning department, gift totaling $15,000 from Hartz Corporation in lieu of the sidewalk fund. And number 15, request disposes of obsolete material Acton Memorial Library. Okay, number seven, I held because there were a number of these permits and licenses that the assessor's office had, or collector's office had noted that they have not, they, oh, outstanding money, and then there were some, we don't really know what not found means, but we're listed as not found. Oh, you did, oh, okay. Can you explain that?
It means they're an incorporated entity and they're not subject to town licensing.
Oh. All right. Okay, so it was my recommendation in talking to the manager that we approve these contingent on anybody, you know, paying their taxes. So if everybody's okay with that, can I just have a motion essentially to that effect?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Steve, you're saying they're not subject to town licensing?
None if you're incorporated through the state, apparently. So they're not on the collector's list as a DBA in town.
Oh, okay, but we still issue them a license?
Yes, yeah, it's just, that's why it said not known or whatever the phrase is.
Right, they don't have to register with the town.
Right.
So what's the motion?
If we could move to approve the selectmen issued permits and licenses for 2016, probably contingent on, you know, being up to date with your taxes.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any other questions from the audience? Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And then if I could have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda items eight through 15.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, perfect timing.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to give you an update on transportation and also to talk about forming some metrics in terms of how transportation is performing and what, how it should improve going forward. Franny and I have met with Margaret Bucie of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has a strong interest in trying to create metrics, and we have some agreement in terms of doing that. We just want to bring that before the board of selectmen. But to start off, I'll go through, does this work? Not sure I got the right instrument. I'm prepared to give you hard copy should this fail. The, we currently have five different transports in the community. The first one I want to talk about is the Council on Aging Van. That gives us about eight hours of service each day. It's dedicated solely for seniors and people with disabilities. The second service is the Road Runner. The Road Runner is a service that we took over from Lower Regional Transit Authority, and we've made some improvements in regards to the level of service being provided. It gives seven hours of service a day, Monday through Friday. It is dedicated to seniors and people with disabilities, but we also backfill with the general population as long as it doesn't prevent a senior from getting a ride. The third service is the Dollar Ride. The Dollar Ride is a nine-hour per day service, Monday through Friday, and that's open to the general population. We find that about 40% are seniors riding the Dollar Van, and the rest are generally teens between 12 and 16. The next service is the Rail Shuttle. The Rail Shuttle is commuter-based service that provides about five hours of service in the morning and in the afternoon. It is coming from two parking lots that connect up to the South Acton Train Station, and it is a very popular service. The last service is the one that we just launched on November 2nd, the Cross Acton Transit, and that's a 10-hour service, Monday through Friday, that operates between 8:00 and 6:00 during the day and connects up residences and businesses along the route. It has been a real challenge to try to create this, and the main focus that we've had is to try to look at all the different groups in the community that need service, and there's a lot of conflicting interests in regards to those needs. We've heard from many seniors that want to utilize this service. We've also heard from parents of young children that want their service to go to certain places. So it's a type of service that tends to want to be pulled in all different directions, and it's been very difficult to try to focus it and keep it all going in the proper timeline in which we need to perform. The next slide will show you the route, the stops that we have now utilizing. This has been amended in the last week, the first week, it's when it started on the 2nd, I was able to go out on the 5th on one of the trips, and it was, the trip was taking an hour and a half of time. We had scheduled to have 10 trips during the day, because it was an hour and a half, it was only seven trips, and that also meant that the customers had no reasonable expectation as to when the vehicle was going to show up at any individual stop. So we had to act quickly to try to get it back into the proper timeline, and that meant that within the next week, we changed that route to try to fit within the hour timeline that we had originally proposed. The next slide shows the Council on Aging, the trips, the people delivered through each month for the past year, and the cancellations. You'll note that the people delivered has been increasing lately, and the cancellations are dropping. That is a large part of the programs that we are now putting forth. So for instance, Cheryl Ball is running a lot of non-English speaking programs, and we have those people connected up with the COA van so that we have more full trips, which means we have more riders. The cancellations are part of the confidence that people have with the dispatch system. Previously, people would overbook because they weren't sure whether they would need a ride or get a ride. Now that they can book the same day, they're doing less overbooking, which means there's less cancellations, which makes the system more effective. The next slide shows... system more effective. The next slide shows the Road Runner and again, we're seeing the same thing happening there where there's increased people utilizing the system and decreasing cancellations. We are hoping that will continue as we go forward. And the next one is the Minute Van. This one gets a little bit more, it doesn't trend well because it's very related to kids. And so months where you see school vacations, you'll see drop-offs and obviously during the summer, we have a drop-off. The same thing, months in which there are vacations and you'll have a lot more cancellations because the parents booked during the vacation then realize that they don't need the trip. And then this slide will show, this is the Rail Shuttle. And the Rail Shuttle is continuously growing. It really has maximized its service. The parking spaces are becoming the limitation, not the bus. So we got to start thinking about, of looking for more parking spaces for people to utilize. I would note a couple of things in terms of the trends there. You look at February, we had a big drop-off in February and that's because the MBTA was not running that month. We, and we typically see drop-offs in the summer because a lot of the commuters are taking vacations. But by and large, during the course of the year, we'll run between 40 to 60 riders per day. The next slide gives you a perspective of what the service means. And when you're looking over the past four years, it's very clear on this slide to see the increase in the Rail Shuttle and to see how much value it is bringing to the community. As you look at the three door-to-door services, it's a little bit more difficult to discern because of the, there's not as many riders on those particular vehicles. But on the next slide, if you look at this, this gives you a better idea. When you can combine all three door-to-door services over the four years, you can see that trend is rising in terms of utilization. And again, in this one, the annual ridership for the total trips during a year, there's a definite increase since FY '11 to FY '15. But that increase isn't as clear when you look at each individual door-to-door service. On the next slide, it breaks it out to the Rail Shuttle and the door-to-door services and then that makes it a little bit more clear as to how that annual ridership is increasing. This is the, the Transportation Enterprise budget for this fiscal year. We have a budget of $509,400 and you can see each individual operation and the amount of money that is dedicated towards that. In terms of the revenues that we receive, 46% of the revenues come from the General Fund, 31% come from LRTA, 19% come from the commuter parking lot, and 4% come from fairs. On this next slide, this shows the value of the dispatch service that is being utilized by the four communities, Acton, Boxboro, Littleton, and Maynard. You can see the calls per month are dramatically increasing, which is an indicator of people wanting to utilize the services in the four communities more. And this is also representative in the total calls that are being provided by the dispatch services. It's going to be a challenge because as they become inundated with more services, we may need to make more investment in dispatch. And as those calls come in, that's going to put more and more demand on the service that we're providing. On this next slide, this gives you a perspective on the door-to-door services provided by population. So on the tot, on term of the door-to-door services, 67% of our customers are seniors, 4% are people with disabilities, and 29% is the general population. On the next slide, it shows the purposes that people utilize the, the services. The largest component is for medical, 21%, 19% for employment volunteer opportunities, nutrition 15%, social recreation 14%, shopping 13%, education 11%. These are all factors that are very important to the riders that are utilizing the service. This next, next slide shows the template that Margaret Bucy proposed in regards to assessing the metrics in terms of performance for the service. I think some of her, some of her ideas, we've given good consideration to. One of the aspects that, as I'll talk to you, is that I believe it's the population, the service, and the effectiveness of the service that the Board of Selectmen are looking towards. Clearly, finances, finances are part of that, but really is it the, the people that are receiving the service? Do they need that service and are we effectively delivering it? And so as we looked at the, the proposed metrics, we tried to think about that. So this, this slide gives you some idea in terms of us in comparison with Maynard and Littleton and how they're providing their services. Our, our two, our three door-to-door services average between 1.4 to 2.1 rides per hour. Littleton has averages between 1 and 1.7 rides per hour. Maynard has a 2.7, which is very good rides per hour. The main reason they're able to attain that level is because of their community being very small and very densely populated. So the tendency is the trips for the people in Maynard are shorter and therefore they can put more per hour. But we compare very well in terms of the rides per hour that Littleton provides. And in particular, the Road Runner seems to be very effective because more and more we're getting into program trips. And so for instance, as those trips that I mentioned before, that Cheryl Ball is utilizing the service, we also have a, a shopping trip every Wednesday with a Road Runner for non-English speakers. And that's been a very popular ride where we take them to the Market Basket in Westford and take them to a Chinese market store in Littleton. And what we want to do is try to connect more up with the COA, with veteran services, with the nursing service, and any other, and recreation, and try to develop programs that utilize the vans so that we can be more effective in bringing more people to where they need to go. In terms of our unduplicated census, the three door-to-door services serve about 150 people every month. They average between five to eight trips for each person. We think that's one of the things that the, the Board of Selectmen should consider heavily in regards to a metric. What is our unduplicated census? Is it increasing? Is it effective? And, and how should we go forward with that? The other is in terms of our ridership per hour. Currently, and we're averaging 1.66 rides per hour with the three services. We'd like to see that get up to two in the year 2018. The unduplicated census, we'd like to see that increase from 151 to 180. And that's the, the last slide. That, that doesn't mean, you know, in my personal opinion, I think we have a very effective service. I think it's very, it's, it compares very favorable with any other service that's being provided by other communities. But I don't believe that we should rest on those laurels. I think we should try to improve and try to create a more effective, better service that allows more and more people in the community to have access. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Doug. Questions or comments from the board? Franny, do you want to start us off?
I thought I'd go later.
Oh, you'll go later? Okay.
Yeah.
This side. Janet or Peter? Janet?
I have. All right. Okay, first of all, I rather like the CAT acronym and logo. Oh, I thought, I'd just like to sort of pay tribute to whoever came up with that. I did notice in the comments, and I'm not going to look at all these materials because I read through the materials and picked out stuff. I, I know that, I think it might have been Margaret who said that Franny wanted to focus on the quality of the service and which I think is fine, but I do think, you know, I'm not a FinCom member, but I do recognize that, you know, we have to sort of keep an eye on the cost and endeavor to reduce the cost per passenger to the town because we're, we're paying, what is it, 40% or whatever the percentage is of the total cost. And I, and my concern is that, you know, if we don't continue to work on that at some point, because it's a big number, you know, and we have a lot of other challenges in our budget and, you know, my concern is that some people might not be so supportive of it and I think that would be a shame. But I had a question. Okay, these are really odd, hodgepodge things. There was a mention of the Lower Regional Transit Authority, the $100,000 contribution. Is that an ongoing thing or is that a one-off thing? Because obviously it, it goes into consideration in the annual budget, at least right now.
It's an ongoing thing. It's a, the assessment on the cherry sheet that's for regional transit authorities for each community. So unless the state reduces that on their cherry sheet, it's pretty steady.
Okay. And then, so the, that contribution plus the funds, the parking fee funds, both go toward reducing the amount that the town has to pay?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, from $25.40. I was wondering if you had any comparisons of cost per ride for Littleton and Maynard?
I don't, I don't have what their total cost is, Janet, but we could probably look into that.
Okay, I'm just curious. Okay, clarification of wording. There was a reference to 24 hours of door-to-door with vans, fully utilized, quote unquote, but not fully used. And I honestly, I didn't, you know, I, I tend to use used when I, you know, when some people use utilized, but I thought, okay, maybe this is a technical term that I'm not getting. What, what is the difference?
Well, what I mean by that, the vans are always moving. They're always going somewhere. Sometimes that might be with nobody on board because they're going to pick up somebody.
Okay.
Sometimes that's with just one person on board. That's full utilization, but it's not full use of the van.
Okay, okay. So they're, they're moving, but they're, it's not optimal efficiency?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. And then I think you've already answered my question about all the rides, but minute, the Diala Ride, it's taken me a long time to sort out these different categories. Diala Ride, the Council on Aging Van, the Road Runner, there's shared rides. I, you know, I really don't understand how that works. I know people schedule the rides and you try to match them so they're sort of going, sort of in the same area, but obviously it's sometimes, it's tough unless everybody's in the same group and they're starting in the same place and going to the same place. But is that the idea? Is it supposed to be a shared ride service?
To the best point possible, yes. And we, the dispatchers spend a fair amount of time with each person that calls in to try to figure out, is there a way that they can reschedule their, where they need to go that fits another person's needs. We're also working with people like Emerson Hospital to try to have clinics for seniors during certain times of the day where we could have a group of seniors all go at the same time.
Because one of the things that, it's pretty obvious from the data is that the shuttle is, you know, it's very efficient. It's the most efficient of all the services because you have people who are starting at the same place and going to the same place. On, on the subject of the shuttle, I was wondering whether you had given any thought, aside from trying to expand parking areas, which, you know, if there's any possibility at some point of sort of developing a stop, you know, kind of like the fixed route stop, only for people who aren't, aren't in West Acton or aren't, aren't be able to park at the church parking lot. They might be somewhere else and they'll just be on, you know, on the road and they can have prepaid and gotten whatever, a parking pass and, and able to be boarding, boarding as if it were a fixed route bus, but it's actually the shuttle. I'm just wondering if there was any thought to that because it would be another way of trying to collect people who are basically going to the same place around the same time. I, I did notice in the, the fixed routes that was published that there is, there is some service available for people who are commuting later. If you're, if, you know, you're interested in getting to the train station at 8:25 and you're going to be coming from one of the places that the bus, the shuttle hits before, or the bus hits before that, but then it stops, I guess after 5:35 if you arrive and you need to go to one of those places that's served by the fixed route bus, you're out of luck. So it could serve some commuting residents less flexibly who are in Kelly's Corner and the Town Center and Nagog Woods and that sort of thing. But I, I just wondered if you had given any, if that was a possibility for the future? Because it seems that the shuttle is the most efficient service and I think it's obviously helpful to the people who are using it. I think that it's challenging with a door-to-door service to, you know, it's going to need work. I don't know if you've considered increasing the fees or, or developing a fee system where you charge less in the middle of the day and you charge more at rush hour, you know, when, when traffic is the worst and the drivers are most challenged. Or, or you do what happens with a lot of people when you're traveling and, you know, by cab. You, well, I don't know if you want to be like a cab. You're charging by time and, and distance, but also if you have a group sharing a cab, you know, typically that reduces the cost per person. So just, no, I, I think it's interesting. I do just want to reiterate that I'd like to sort of keep track on, of, of the costs because I don't want that.
Sure. And to get to some of what you were asking, number one, one of the things that we looked at was to stop the Rail Shuttle at 6 o'clock and have it start up in, at Nagog Park and take commuters located there to the Rail Shuttle. Unfortunately, right now, we have a driver that can't make that time schedule. And so we'll continue to look at that, see if we can open up that opportunity. The reason why that opportunity might be there is because the new train schedule will be coming out shortly and it appears that there's going to be a pretty big gap in time. I think it's from 8:00 to 9:45 where it won't be productive for us to have the Rail Shuttle during that time. The other thing that we've been doing is we're talking with the Wave Project in West Acton. Not so much in terms of the commuter train station, but the Wave Project is talking to Mount Calvary Church about them leasing some spaces at Mount Calvary. Their employees would park there and the Rail Shuttle would pick them up and bring them to West Acton Center. And so we're trying to think outside the box whenever we can and, and see whether or not there are opportunities to make fuller vans.
And the only, the last comment I have is about, Margaret did, Willie Bussie sent the article. I'd seen it about in the Beacon about the Uber, the fact that Uber is in town. And I thought, well, that's nice if you have $9 to spend to go from the train station to West Acton. Good for you. That's pretty, well, it sounds steep to me because, you know, I, I don't take, I wouldn't take a cab in town in locally. And maybe if I were in Boston and going from one end of Boston to, to somewhere, maybe I'd be willing to pay a lot of money. But I don't imagine that there are going to be a lot of people who will take that option unless obviously, well, it's convenient.
Well, the biggest concern is that our door-to-door service, the people that are utilizing that are people that really can't utilize the Uber service because of their, their need to have that door-to-door transportation. But I'm a big believer in making as many options out there available to people. And if that's one of the options, I'm in favor. I think it should be a little bit more regulated and people should have a little bit more confidence about who that driver is and, and where they're going to, but.
It's the same with Airbnb. Yeah, I just, yeah, I, I'll, I'll go to a hotel, you know, having read about people kidnapped and things like that. Thank you. Peter, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a few thanks, Doug. I, you know, as a person who hasn't used this, I've been confused about the various names here. I mean, if the road, it sounds like the Road Runner is basically the COA van with backfills for people who
Correct.
don't, aren't elderly or handicapped.
Yep, correct.
And, and there's a need for And there's a need for two buses, I assume.
There's no doubt about it. I sincerely believe we could put a third van out there for seniors and we would fill it up for the day.
As far as the metrics go, I mean, I, the numbers seem fine to me. I certainly could support that. I assume you're just, as the numbers have increased over the years, it's more visibility to people, more outreach to advertise the service, and people just become more aware of it and the numbers go up as they decide they better, they might want to take advantage of the service instead.
That's correct. And I think we've reached the plateau now where we have to be more program-oriented, not just people-oriented, and trying to get a program that fits the needs of the van and get more people on it.
Okay. I just have a comment to make. I'm not going to ask you to comment on this. I don't know if you were here when Jim Yarren spoke during Citizens Concerns about his concern that TAC as an advisory committee had made some recommendations, and then when the route was picked for the fixed route shuttle, it was different and TAC wasn't involved in that decision. Jim asked me to comment on that. I, I understand how those things can happen. These are incredibly complicated. I mean, you're a staff person, but generally the selectmen and other board members are volunteers and, so a lot of things happen that, you know, don't get processed as much as they should. Generally, this town tries to process things to death. My feeling about it is that we need to respect the process, that the selectmen appoint advisory committees to advise us. They're the ones that have the expertise, have all the information. They ought to be advising us about what decisions should be made within their particular jurisdiction. I recently had a problem myself with, an issue with the Kelly's Corner group that we moved ahead on without their understanding and had to backtrack. So that's just generally my feeling. I understand how things can happen. I'm not going to ask you to comment about what happened, but I'm sure you feel the same way generally about dealing with these committees. So I just wanted to make that comment. And other than that, I want to thank you for all the work you've done. I know how complicated it is. I think you're doing a great job and hopefully we can meet these metrics. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I would say that I really believe it's important for the Transportation Advisory Committee to be involved in these things. And I have made a commitment to them to go to each one of their meetings to, to keep them informed and to try to gain advice from them. I take their advice very seriously, but as I said previously, there are a lot of things pulling at where the van should go and where it shouldn't. And because I'm a part-time employee and I recognize that it wasn't working, a decision had to be made very quickly. I regret that may have not been what the Transportation Advisory Committee wanted, but I'm still committed to work with them and hopefully try to assess what they need and what they feel the community should be doing.
Franny, did you want to go last or you want me to?
Okay. I just want to thank you for all the work. And I'm, I'm really happy that you're going to be coming to all the TAC meetings. I think that will be really helpful. We have somebody in town, David Scharfarz, who gave us advice along the way. And when I was first researching a lot of this, somebody said, you know, you have the flexible transit guru just moving into your town, like 10 years ago. And, and it was him. And he always said that one of the most important things is to get town staff on it. And for a long time, we didn't have it, and I think that's really made a big difference. So I think that will be useful. I want to point out sort of to everybody that the train schedule is going to be changing things.
Yes.
In a few weeks, so even as we, no matter what we do in the next month or two, it's going to be changing, right?
Correct. And clearly, we'll have to respond fairly quickly because we don't want people on the rail shuttle in particular to be left in the lurch. And we'll have to notify them of the changes and, and figure out how our rail shuttle will respond to that.
And also about the train, did you take into account when the reverse commuters arrive in terms of the morning? You know, that eight to nine forty-five break?
Right. There are no trains coming the other direction either. It's a real, it's a dead time in the, in the new schedule.
When does the first one come, arrive in Acton?
The first one arrives...
From the city?
From the city. If I remember correctly, it was around 7:30, Franny, wasn't it?
Oh, wow. I don't know.
Yeah, in the new schedule, yeah.
Anyway, I just want to make sure that we really think about that reverse commute, especially because we're going to be talking tonight about...
Well, it will be part of the factor of the, there, hopefully, there is a reasonable alignment in time between the train leaving and the new train coming in and that we can keep the shuttle there for that period of time. But that will only be good for people going to West Acton Center in terms of the rail shuttle.
For the rail shuttle, right. But I'm thinking about the fixed route.
Yep, yep.
So I'll say what I've always been a broken record saying to Doug, which I've had to listen to reality, you know, the staffing issues, I know, and the town, the timing issues. And so I haven't really heard, I haven't seen it be what I want, but for the record, I want to put it out there.
It's like three-dimensional chess.
Yes, and I gather how hard it is. But I think it's really, really important to go where the big numbers of people are. And I remember there was possibility of just going a little ways into the train station to save time and not all the way to where the train is. And I think that's a mistake. And I think it's a mistake not to go right where the students are. And I think the biggest group of people to see the train, the bus, is really important because when they see it coming by and coming by, if the parents could see the bus coming by and coming by every time they're picking up their kid, they'll realize, oh, I don't have to come pick up my kid because I see it. So I just wanted that to go on the record, even though I understand, and you always explain to me why these things aren't always the way I want them to be. I also think the town should be thinking about a smaller vehicle. I know the council on aging has said for many years, it's a, they have too big a vehicle considering there's only one or two people on it at the time. And the MV1, which is an accessible van, costs less than $50,000. And even a sedan, if we had a backup accessible vehicle, could take some of these trips. And I wouldn't mind if there were only one or two people on some of these dial-a-ride trips if it was a smaller vehicle, but it's so depressing to see the big van going around in all these towns.
The cost isn't related to the vehicle, though. The cost is related to the driver.
Yeah.
You know, and so you're, it will look nicer by having a smaller vehicle, but it wouldn't be that much more cost-effective.
Well, it would be a little bit more gas-effective, but I remember talking to the person from Transaction that we could get a cheaper rate for the town if we had our own vehicle. So I'm thinking maybe...
Right, but then, but then you're almost saying, I don't want to have more than one person. And I think that's a bad strategy, cost-effectively, because you'll never be able to get more than one or two. Where if you have a van, you have an opportunity to be more cost-effective.
That's true. And that brings me to my next point, which is that I really appreciate the planned trips that you have, because I think that's another way. In addition to going to where the people are, taking multiple people to planned trips is the best way. I also like the idea that somebody said about reducing the rate for groups of people. I remember talking to a woman who was low-vision and she had to take her kids on Minute Van and she was paying like $4 to go to Concord for each of them, so it ended up being a lot. And the, as far as the benchmarks go, it was actually very useful that Margaret and Doug and I all agreed on what you would look at, you know, on the measurements. I think the disagreement in general is what to do if it doesn't fit and what the goals are. Like with the Uber, I like the idea of seeing if Uber could contribute to the program, but, but it's not just a matter of providing it. It's also a matter of providing low-cost transportation to people. I think it's important, unless we want to start tolling drivers for the roads, maybe we should start doing that, too. And I also, I think, in addition to taking commuters from parking lots, I just want to say that I think it's really important that we maybe consider the people without the cars. And I'm very disappointed that due to the staffing, we had to cut out the early and late in the day to the other side of town, because I think that's a big population that could get to the train station. So I think that's all. I just wanted to thank you for the work and also for coming to TAC. And we'll be working these, we'll be attacking these things together. Thanks.
Thank you, Doug and Franny, for all the work you guys have put into this. And it was, you know, nice to see kind of all of the different services described here and, and very interesting to see a lot of the numbers that you showed. I had a, one thing that I hadn't written down, but wanted to, something you said made me think of it, Franny, when you were talking about the visibility. I actually do agree. I think that really is important. But I've mentioned before then, a rail shuttle user, and there have been any number of occasions because we kind of wait, you know, at the rail shuttle or the, you know, the rail shuttle sort of waits there, A, in the morning, they're nice and let us hang out on the train before having to get, or on the shuttle before having to get off when they have enough time in between the trips, which is particularly nice when it's cold out. And then at night, you know, we wait to make sure everybody's gotten off the train. And there are quite a few times that people come up and sort of ask what it is and, you know, where, where we go. There are also a few times that people have gotten on thinking, you know, someplace that we go, and then pretty quickly realize that they're on there. But usually by the time we get out of the parking lot, a lot of people think we go to the fire station where the accessory parking is. So, but at least they get the ride to like the, you know, end, the entrance of the train station where they realize we're not, we are turning left, not going there. But so I do think that, you know, having that visibility is good. And even if, you know, you can't, if it would take too much time to go into the train station or into schools or wherever, perhaps some increased signage at least, because I do, we've got that big sign for, you know, for the rail shuttle parking at the train station and that I see people look at a lot. So if there was like signage like that around at some of these key areas near where we stop, I think that that would be of benefit as well, and maybe that's something you're thinking about.
I'd have to be careful with the signage the planning department would have.
Yeah. Right, we're sure about no fluorescents. All right, well, working out with the sign by law. We were able to get the one for the, you know, rail shuttle, so I think something there would be great. I think I got all the numbers of hours a day, except what, how many hours a day does the Roadrunner run?
The Roadrunner rides seven hours a day. The COA, eight, and the dial-a-ride, nine.
So I had one question. It seems like the cross Acton Transit was quite a bit more, when it's the same number of hours as the rail shuttle and similar to these other ones. Is there a reason for that?
Say that again?
So it seemed like the cost of the fixed route was $130,000. You know, the other ones are around, tend to be around like 90, rail shuttle's like 96. And they run about the same, I mean, cross Acton Transit is 10 hours a day and so is the rail shuttle. Is there a reason that one is more expensive?
Not the rail shuttle's five. I was wondering the other way. I was wondering why the fixed route is...
I thought rail shuttle's five.
The rail is...
The rail shuttle is five hours, yes.
Oh, total?
Yeah, yeah, total of five, yeah. Yeah, it is partly due to the type of vehicle that each one utilizes. It's partly due, we are getting 10 hours of service, but it is, yeah. And so each one of them, it depends on the lunch hour that's being provided for the driver, not only just the services that are provided, so.
Okay. Yes, and I wonder why the rail shuttle, well, it is a bigger van. And I will note, you know, you said that the shuttle, the space on the shuttle isn't so much a problem as the parking is, although I have noticed whenever I have to take, it's a 4:30 out in North Station, I think it gets here like 5:12, that one is always, you know, that one's always full. I took that tonight. And that one is always, I mean, there wasn't any place to sit.
Next stop, yeah.
Yeah, whereas you take the later ones, it's a little more empty. So it is, I know we went to the bigger van, which helped a lot, but beyond the parking, there is some van constraint, although generally it works. And I will note, Franny, that there are a number of people that do walk both to West Acton, it's West Acton in particular, but also to the Mount Calvary as well. And then I'll say, I think part of that drop in the summer and in the nicer months is also due to the warmer weather.
People walk, yeah.
Yeah, people walking and biking in particular that then in the winter end up taking the rail shuttle. So it's, it's a great service. Do, you spoke about trips and then also riders. Is a trip, like if, you know, all of us were on one van, is that one trip or is that four trips?
A rider could take one trip, but generally a rider takes two trips.
Okay.
You know, back and forth. So the trips are generally, you know, you divide by two to get the number of riders in general.
Okay, but so if I'm on the same van as Peter, that's four, and we go somewhere and come back, that's four trips?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I just wasn't sure about that. And then I had a question about, you had that chart about what kinds of, the reasons people were taking a ride, and I didn't know what nutrition meant.
Nutrition?
Is that like grocery shopping?
Usually it is classes that orientated to the seniors in getting better nutrition. It's not the shopping trips.
Okay, so it's not shopping, yeah, because there was a separate one for shopping, so then that, that confused me. I don't know what this note means. Oh, I was going to note that you had some comparisons to Littleton and Maynard, and it was, you pointed out sort of our rides per hour numbers, but it was worth noting how many more rides per year we provide than other of those towns. And again, I think because we have a much more robust transit system, and so I think that's important to recognize. And I really liked, you know, hearing that you're coordinating with Cheryl and everything she's doing, and I'm glad to hear that you're working with the senior center as well, because I think that would be a great place. And I'm wondering even, you know, there are programs they run now, have you guys worked with them to try to at least, you know, maybe when they put that info out in their newsletter, they could suggest taking the fixed route or the COA van or the things to get there?
One of the things that we did, we aligned the cross Acton Transit, so it's arriving at the COA facility five minutes before the hour.
Oh, okay.
And so usually their programs start on the hour.
Okay, yeah, so maybe it's worth, if they could put that in their, you know, newsletter or other ways, just to alert people to that, because I think that's a great, you know, would be, hopefully we'd get a lot of people onto one van going over there. And then, you know, I'll just reiterate, I think those really are good metrics and good ways to measure this, and they look like, hopefully, realistic things. I, you know, it was, it's interesting to see, when you look at the rail shuttle, there's a, you know, really large increase, but it is after a couple of years. So I think that's worth noting as well, especially with the new fixed route that, you know, I think there's some people in town that expect that by, you know, a year from now, it's going to, you know, it should either be amazing or we should stop doing it. But I think it's worth noting that we need to give this...
Takes time, yeah.
It takes time, yeah, it takes time. And, you know, working out all of these issues. And again, you know, obviously reiterate what Jim and Peter were speaking about in terms of trying to work with TAC, and I understand that call having to be made. But I think, as you noted, hopefully will be an ongoing conversation, that this isn't the final one for a variety of reasons. So, you know, we obviously encourage you to continue to work with TAC on, on what they recommend as, as the final or semi-final route. And then, you know, again, there was some allusions made to the note we received from Margaret about Uber and whether we should be outsourcing our transportation to that to, you know, and I think my concern is that, you know, you outsource or we rely on, we say, okay, well, now these private companies like Uber are coming in, well, that only services a very small population, first of all, the people that can afford it, and second of all, the people that can navigate that technology. And I think it would leave out the vast majority of people that are using our public transit. I mean, you spoke a lot about the non-English speakers in town. Uber's really not set up for that, as far as I know. Uber's really not set up for that as far as I know, and I don't think there's as deep penetration there. I can't remember what the percentage, but it's like 67% or something, that's seniors, they're not the ones, it's mostly people my age that are using Uber and that are using the apps to do that. So, you know, I think it's worth recognizing that we're providing transportation to, public transportation to a much broader group, and I think that Town Meeting has supported this again and again in a number of ways. And so I think there is the support amongst the Acton population for public transportation and for people that are underserved populations in town. And so it's important to recognize that we are serving those people and it's not all about, you know, the private sector could pick this up or do it more efficiently, because I don't think that they are getting to these people more efficiently than we are. And, you know, I'll, I agree that you, we want to keep an eye on, on the financials. Public transportation's not self-funding anywhere and it is always something that's subsidized and for a lot of good reasons, because if I was paying, you know, $20 a day to get back and forth to the, to the train station, I wouldn't be doing it. So, you know, and if it's $9 a day on an Uber ride, I'm not going to be doing that other. I would have to figure out parking, which would exacerbate an existing problem. So again, and, you know, I just, there were, I noticed at least two other of my fellow rail shuttle riders that were here, one now and one earlier tonight as well, and it really is, I've just loved seeing how successful that is. And the number of people it's pulled from outside of Acton is really incredible as well, so it's, it's a, a service that a lot of people value and, and benefit from. And I'm excited to see the fixed route grow hopefully similarly as we work out various kinks and, and get the word out more. So just thank you guys in general for, for all of your work on this. Yes.
This is a really mundane question. I had a question because you mentioned the fixed route costs had to do with the vehicle and, and I was wondering, it made me, because I do once in a while see these things around town, but I don't know what the fixed route shuttle looks like. Is it different from the ones like the, the train shuttle or I assume that...
Depending upon the size of the vehicle, there are, there are different driver requirements, different licenses. And so like the rail shuttle and the, the Cross Act and Transit are bigger vehicles and the door-to-door services then require more expertise for the driver.
So what's the capacity of those, the vehicles? I've never been on, well, I don't...
I think Rachel's 18.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we went from a 15 to an 18.
And so the other things are smaller, how much smaller are they?
12 to 14 seats are the door-to-door. And, and there's a cutoff, I think it's at 15 seats where there's a more requirements.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Franny said you have another.
Before you put it out, I wanted to say, I wanted to sort of say two things because I sort of would love the board to be able to together request this. One is good, really good communication with the Council on Aging. Sometimes I've heard that they've wondered about if they're hearing enough, you know, just having enough communication and people really knowing the drivers. I think there was a sad coincidence that there were, just as we took on the dispatch and the shared dispatch, the last couple of drivers who had been working at the COA stopped working for them. So then they had new drivers and new dispatch at the same time, and I think it was a little jarring. And so I want to sort of just put out to Doug to make sure that that communication happens. I heard really great things from the Maynard Council on Aging. They have been really enjoying the dispatch from Crosstown Connect. And I know a lot of our seniors here have been also. So I'm happy to see that and I just sort of want to make that sort of formal request to make sure that the COA is having a, a close relationship, even though the COA van is not being dispatched. I also wanted to explain to people in general why we have all these names. And the other request I sort of wanted to have is that if we could in the future try to brand, combine brochures, combine names in a way that's less confusing. We've always had a COA van and the Roadrunner, just historically, you know, one was dispatched out of Lowell and one was dispatched out of our Council on Aging. But now that we've added these three other vehicles and they all have their own name and Crosstown Connect Transportation Management Association, or TMA, has a similar name to the Cross Act and Transit, even I who know exactly which one they are start stumbling. So I, I'm hoping that we can sort of streamline in some ways.
If you ask the rider, they would say that the vehicle should be named after the driver.
Franny, I would also encourage you as the liaison to, to COA and to TAC to perhaps maybe think about ways to, to increase that communication. And maybe there's, if you said there are people who have good experiences, maybe there's a way to, to do sort of interviews or, or capture that in some way to, to kind of share those real-life experiences with other people at the Senior Center to, you know, reassure them that these are friendly, friendly folks as well.
Both, both our Roadrunner and COA van, the drivers stop at the COA every week and communicate with the staff.
That's good.
And I wasn't even aware of that and, and they've been doing that for some time.
Peter?
Quick questions. You're asking, I think you're recommending that we, we vote to accept, adopt these metrics. Is that your recommendation?
Correct.
And, and then it came up with Katie's question about trips versus riders. Both of these metrics are in terms of individual people as opposed to trips. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thanks.
Questions or comments from the audience?
Deborah Symes, 109 Concord Road. Two things, one, I just want to endorse what you just said, Franny. I think for the public it is tremendously confusing, so there's that. The other thing is, and this may already be in the hopper, I have no idea, but if and when you're thinking about sort of expanding the successful shuttle service, somebody mentioned, I can't remember who, Nagog Park is another potential satellite. I also want to maybe lobby for the Colonial Spirits Lot, because that would draw from the Pope Road and all of its tributaries as well as Robbins, Robbins Park, blah, blah, blah. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
And I did want to say, I love that idea of using the, having the parking at the Mount Cavalry Church and then getting the wave people there on our vans. I think that's really, thinking very out of the box and, and really great use because they're going that way anyways. So, you know, it would free up, I'm sure, parking for them and get more people on our vans and it's very, and hopefully maybe they'd even have some employees that would be, you know, I don't know if they're going to have a lot of employees from out the Boston area or, or east of here, but if there are people even doing the reverse commute, they could take it as well. So just an interesting point. Yes.
Okay, now I'm speaking as a member of TAC. Doug, I guess you came in after my comments at the beginning and we shared emails, so you know what my, we'll call it a gripe, but obviously it's been discussed. So we will hopefully have a chance to work together. I, I did make the point to you that, you know, once a bus route is made and fixed, it's very important to keep it made and fixed unless everybody using it sort of knows this is a temporary thing, so we have to keep that in mind. I want to echo everyone's gratitude, having a very active and competent staff person, you know, spending the time and working on this really, it's, you know, you've done a great job. It's a lot of work and I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. A few quick things, obviously, I think the most important thing is, is really another process thing. Transportation really is important. We've seen that over and over again. I think that there should be, you can choose the period, every two months, every month, every quarter, a transportation report. Doug and TAC, it can be the same evening, it would make sense to be the same evening, comes in, reports and has a discussion, because obviously we're going way over agenda and we've hardly even tapped on things. In support of that, I think it may have been discussed here before, but there was that article in the Globe about May, Acton versus, what was it?
Roxbury.
Matapan.
Matapan, yeah.
And so that underscores and that really did outline the social benefits of transportation, just how important it is. Next quick thing. So Acton is a really kind of funky, laid-out area as far, it's not Lexington with a center, it's not a lot of other, it's not, you know, Maynard with that center and, and so there are a lot of challenges from that perspective. And I think it may not happen now, but I think it will happen in the future, that we will have two fixed routes crisscrossing. Hopefully one of them serves the, basically the three main senior locations that I know of in town, the Senior Center, uh...
Windsor Green and...
Windsor, thank you.
Satchamway.
Robbinsboro.
Or Robbinsboro.
Robbinsboro, yeah, Satchamway. And of course that passes through a lot of locations where folks would want to go to. So that could be one route and a fixed route. Okay, so the next topic is to communicate with the senior centers and really try to get them focused on traveling out together to, at the same time, I, you know, we've mentioned that, would allow us going toward that ability to get a fixed route and take one of those vans, one of those three sort of semi, you know, efficient vans, use that as a fixed route van. And the other two vans could truly be used for those miscellaneous trips for seniors and disabled that they're needed for. And we would have like two super great fixed routes in town that would unquestionably, if the rail shuttle could be successful with its little route, fixed van going up and down Great Road and across Main Street would be fantastic. So that's something to look forward to in the future and, you know, it's going to take a little work to get there. I, there's probably something else, but I didn't have a place to make notes. I hope we can do this again real soon. You know, TAC really wasn't prepared for this, we just, I just knew that there was something going on about transportation today. So I hope, you know, you can do a fixed meeting for transportation and, oh, I know the other thing is, I'd like to hear what the board has to say about the idea of, before we establish a fixed route, given the importance of it and some of the, the counter concerns, because I think not serving lower Great Road is a great disservice. And we can't apparently do both, lower Great Road, you know, the rest of Great Road and the Senior Center. So putting out, before we actually establish a fixed route, putting out to a more public meeting, get the input, so that when we do establish this, the people in, you know, in the locations where they would say, it's obvious, why did you leave us out? There will be a lot of them, but some of them are very obvious and very, you know, as I say, Senior Center or lower Great Road. I think we should have input so that at least we can say that we all, you all, thought about this, we all thought about this, before we came to the conclusion that by necessity we could only have one and this is what it is. So I'd like to know if you think this should be subject to a much more public type of meeting to talk about that.
Reactions, Franny?
I, I always like public meetings and public input. I do, I have been telling people, tell Doug your impressions, you know, take the van these first few months, take the shuttle and make comments. And in a way, that has sort of been substituting for an evening forum or something where we hear from people. So I've been assuming that we would be getting that input by users, but I...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you'll hear from the constituents who really have an interest.
Any other?
In that way?
I think my suggestion, I think we've had mixed luck with public forums. Sometimes we get a lot of people and sometimes we don't get very many, and when we do, it tends to be kind of, I want to say special interests, but in some ways special interests. And I wonder if it would be more useful if perhaps we put a survey or something, you know, in the next town meeting warrant or something like that, just to get some feedback that way. Maybe that's a, would get more responses than one public forum. So I don't know, something worth considering, I don't know if you guys thought about. I know there was a lot of info out, there were a number of articles in the Beacon and info on the website for a while, seeking comment on the proposed routes, but now that those proposals have sort of changed now that we know, it, it, I think would be worth going back to the public to get, and obviously they're going to change again, but it, it could be worth going back to get a...
I, I do have a, a database, so I've received approximately 200 emails from a variety of people with all the different locations they'd like the, the CAT to go to, and I can provide that to the selectmen. There are so many different sites that we couldn't reasonably reach, that's the hottest pot to distill from it. We've, by and large, we heard a large majority of people were either from Nagog Woods, they were parents from the school system, or they were seniors. Those were the three groups that have responded in, in the most numbers.
That's interesting, yeah, it could be worth, even kind of, if you know what some of the options are, putting out there to say sort of rank, would you rather we go to, you know, the lower Great Road or whatever? And then, you know, try to get a sense and, and maybe from beyond, so 200 people have already responded, but...
I got a lot, oh, I'd live on this street.
Oh, sure, yeah, I mean, I would, you know, if you want to stop at my apartment, that'd be great, but, and then just two last things I wanted to say. I remember reading that article in the Globe about comparing us to Matapan, and I think part of what really disappointed me with that is that that reporter had not done much research about Acton and failed to mention the public transportation. I think if they had picked another town that really hasn't done as much as we have, it might have made more sense and they, but they just assumed that we didn't have a lot of these options available and so they weren't mentioned, which was an unfortunate disservice. And then I also did want to note that we got our copy of the Beacon, the MMA's newsletter, and it did have a very nice picture of everyone at the ICMA conference. So just again, congratulating everybody for receiving the ICMA award for Crosstown Connect, so that is also recognized here. So congrats again to Steve and Doug and everybody who worked on, on that. It's nice that there was some international recognition for that.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, any other questions or comments from the audience or from the board?
Can you look into the idea of a regular meeting?
Yes, for sure, I wrote that down. I got a lot of notes tonight. So can I have a motion to support the metrics for our transportation as proposed?
I move that we support these metrics as proposed.
Second?
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections? Okay, thank you Doug, so you've got some metrics. Now we just got to do them. Okay. Man, I'm glad we deferred that hearing. Number five, Minuteman Regional Discussion of the Boxborough Proposed Amendment, this is related to Minuteman Vote Text. Janet, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, I guess everybody got the, the Boxborough proposal, I don't know, a few weeks ago, and then more recently we got the response from the Town of Concord. It's the Concord Board of Selectmen who actually conferred with council, so I think that the statement we got or the questions we got are probably largely from council. I don't, I, the next meeting of the people who are representing the, the member town selectmen is going to be next month and I, we were supposed to get feedback from our respective boards. And if all you want to do is say that Concord's questions and concerns are very good ones, that's fine. There was, I did go to this, a meeting this morning, it was, bless you, the superintendent provided another overview of the building project among other things, and then talked about the proposal to, he was, he was going to recommend to the, to the school committee that they vote to basically approve the, going forward the building project and moving the project, the proposal to, to the towns, setting a deadline, basically making it effective as of December 1st, so they have two months until the beginning of February to, if they had any objections, calling a special town meeting to express their opposition. Or if they, if they wanted to call a town meeting to, you know, find out what the town thought, then they could do that. But the idea was that if there was no opposition, then the project would be supported as of February 2nd. And the alternative is if there, if anybody opposed in their individual town meetings, then they would go to the district-wide ballot. then they would go to the district-wide ballot, and the aim for that would be to have everybody schedule a district-wide ballot before April 2nd, at which point, assuming they got a majority vote from the district, they, the project would be deemed approved. There's savings involved with both of these scenarios. We didn't get details, but basically, if the approval went, was effective as of February, there would be $5 million in savings due to the lower interest rate for the borrowing, that savings would drop down $2 million if the approval was delayed. Discussion, of course, migrated, as it always does, to other issues, and there seemed to be two camps of thought. One was people who said, we have to move forward with the building project, we can't spend time amending the regional agreement, there's no time for that, we have to move forward with the building project. And then there was a school of thought, which I actually think is the way we're going to have to go, that these issues are intertwined, the building project and the disagreements that spawned the need to amend the regional agreement are intertwined, and we're frankly going to have to tackle some of the issues that we probably could address in the regional agreement in order to get people to buy in to the building project. There was also some requests for guidance about just what, what the regional, the district's council and bonding council has to say about all of this. The Lexington selectmen have a member who was, until he retired, bond counsel, and he said, basically, bond counsel doesn't, isn't going to weigh in, in a way, that's going to be at all helpful to the member towns. They, they're, you know, at a higher level, and they're not, their advice is not necessarily going to help the member towns to resolve their, their issues. Something that I learned that was a surprise was that apparently, some of the member towns met, and based on the fact that the meeting was in Sudbury, and it included Lincoln, I can guess, there was about five or six member towns who met, so I would guess that probably a number of the member towns, the other member towns were towns that have issues. I guess Wayland was among them, although I didn't, I had a chance to ask the Wayland reps, and I forgot to do that. But they met last Saturday to talk about issues. They didn't really go into details about whether they came to any solutions, but it sounded, based on the two who spoke during the meeting, that they thought that the administration for Minuteman should get more involved in trying to help the towns, the member towns come to a solution. I, I actually went on a tear, I guess I've just been, because I've been basically sitting, and this is the way a lot of the meetings have gone, where the towns that really want to move forward with the project, they're in the majority, we approved the proposed amendments, and we're listening at a lot of these meetings to the dissenting group, the malcontents kind of griping about this and that. I, they were looking for comments from other people who weren't speaking, and I said, okay, fine, you know, we're probably going to stay in the district. We, our town meeting approved the proposed amendments a couple of years ago that didn't go into effect, because they only got 10 out of 16 towns to support. And I'm very concerned, you know, I said that the idea that we wouldn't pass up on this opportunity, get a 40% reimbursement to the state for the cost of a new building, that we would pass it up, and then have to sort of do piecemeal repairs of the building at great expense, or risk losing our accreditation, and then face having to find new homes for maybe 26, 25 students from our town. I said, the idea that we would pass up that opportunity is just dumb, and, but, you know, I said, I'm a little exasperated, because, you know, here we are, we're sort of in the majority, and, and I'm concerned that we're going to have this opportunity slip away because we can't come to terms. And I said, I'm getting the sense from some members that they want the administration to do something, and I said, this is not our, it's not the administration's issue. We're, we're the member towns, we are the principals in what one of the Lincoln selectmen said is a joint venture, and we really, really have to decide what, how we're going to solve these problems. You know, we can give guidance to the administration, but, and they've tried to solve the problem for us, and it hasn't worked. So anyhow, I, I think that, I think that the Boxborough proposal is, as the Concord questions and comments suggest, needs work, because it kind of ignores a lot of the other issues, you know. It's, oh, well, that's great, well, we'll agree simultaneously to, to bond and to approve the withdrawal of the towns that want to get out. Well, you know, there are a lot of contingencies that aren't addressed. So I don't know, I think that the idea is we're trying to now get maybe, maybe the Minuteman Bonding Council to weigh in on it. I, I sent a question to, to the Assistant Superintendent, who's the one who has got the financial wherewithal, Mr. Mahoney, and he wrote back, and I figured I wasn't going to ask him for a follow-up opportunity. I thought, well, okay, I think he probably doesn't want to tip his hand, but he basically said they had no, they had not weighed in on the Boxborough proposal. And I don't know if some of the, the member towns are going to press them to try to give us a little guidance about how it might work. I think that we probably need to come up with a scenario, a potential solution, and then we say, okay, tell us if this would work, you know, it's just rather than, but first, we have to get past all of these little nits that people are, are picking about. I mean, Arlington said, they, they want to amend the agreement. I mean, there are things that are very important to them, they want to amend the agreement. I was surprised Dover, who's, who's school building, the school building chairman is, is from Dover, and I had thought they were going to get out, but he said, if we could amend the agreement with regard to, you know, the minimum five enrollment, you know, they only send maybe two, they don't mind paying for two, but they don't want to be paying for a minimum five when they, and there were some others, so it's the, it's the agreement. Again, even for Dover, he said that Dover would, might stay in, you know, if they were, you know, getting what they thought was a fair deal. Now, there are some towns that don't want to, didn't like the proposed amendments because they would provide for weighted voting. And so a town like Arlington, which sends a lot of kids, would have a heftier vote, and that was objectionable to some of the smaller enrollment towns, including, I think, Boxborough, even though, you know, our AB committee, right, they have weighted voting based on the enrollment, so it just seemed equitable. And then I know that Belmont had an issue with, I think, the wealth factor, because they're basically using the, whatever, the foundation budget, the way they calculate it based on the wealth of the town, though I think Belmont had some objection to that. So there are all these little differences of opinion on little things, and I thought, well, if we could all, if we could figure out what the deal breakers are for each town, and then just work out, figure out, tackle those, then maybe we could reach consensus. But anyhow, so if you have any thoughts about the Boxborough proposal, other than what Concord has suggested, please let me know, and I will carry that with me.
Other board member thoughts?
I just had a question. Who in Boxborough wrote this?
Vince, Vince Amoroso.
It's Vince Amoroso, who's the chairman. He's also Boxborough's representative on the Minuteman School Committee.
Okay.
Although kind of newly that.
Hmm?
I think he's newly in that role.
Yeah, he's new. I don't know who their, if who their prior person was, or if the person was very active, so.
And we're totally separate, even though we're a regional school district.
Correct. Two separate divisions.
We're, yeah, yeah.
So I like the idea, actually, of it, and I wouldn't want, sometimes it's easy to sort of default, nick something by just asking a lot of questions, that it seems overwhelming with questions, so I don't think we can do this. So I would be in favor of trying to make it work, but I hear that you have some concerns that I didn't recognize from the Boxborough proposal, but, I'm grateful to you for telling.
No, it's not, no, I think, I think that, you know, Boxborough, this, you know, I think that the problem with this whole situation is we're, we're just, we were at an impasse. You know, I think that the administration spent a fair amount of time trying to get the six towns that hadn't, well, there's one town that actually voted against it, but spent a fair amount of time trying to persuade the towns that were balking at amending the agreement, which would make the ones that want to get out easier, make it easier to get out, it was crazy, but trying to persuade them, and then finally gave up. You know, they said that, that's, that's where they said, we're not working on the amending the agreement, that's up to the towns, and they're focusing on the building project, because frankly, their, their survival kind of hinges on it. So, but it, it's not that, I don't have, I'm not saying forget about Boxborough's proposal, but, you know, it needs to be vetted. It, it sounds very, Vince Amoroso did say that one of the things he realizes is that there was a lot of anxiety about, due to the uncertainty of who was going to be in the district when people withdrew, and who wanted to get out, and whether they were going to get out. You know, there's sort of this, you're jockeying for position, okay, you're getting out, do I want to let you out? And then the people want to get out saying, well, if you want, you won't let me out, then I'm not going to be, you know, help you out on some other issues. And so he thought, well, we'll just, everybody, it's, well, I've seen some, you know, comedy scenes where everybody doesn't trust each other, so they're all moving together, you know, like the guys who are aiming guns at each other, and they're moving everywhere. Anyhow, but it was sort of like, okay, we'll, we'll give you something, and you'll, and you'll give us something. And it sounds, it's very appealing, but, you know, it, it, there's a lot of details that need to work out, and information that we need to get, in part, because we're, none of us too familiar with the whole, how the process works for obligating a district.
I just hope those details don't, it sounds like a step, at least, and so I'm, I'm hopeful that we work through this. It would be so crazy to give up that 40%.
Well, it's good that they, they, it's now, they've got the selectmen involved, because this has mostly been a school committee issue, and I, you know, we all know from, that there are some people in the school committee who are just really, they were really obstructionist, you know, it's impossible to work with them, I think, and, you know, that we were getting emails, all of the member town boards were getting emails from some, some school committee members. So it's good that they've now gotten the, the selectmen involved, and, and I think that people are realizing that we, we need to come to some agreement, because we're not, we're not, people talk about getting state help from the state, well, they're not going to help us, because we're, we're 16 communities, well-educated, generally more affluent than a lot of other places in the, in the state, and if we can't be grown enough, grown up enough to figure out, work out our own problems, then, you know, why should anybody else want to stick their necks out in our behalf? I mean, that's certainly the feeling I have, so.
Peter?
Yeah, I just was a little confused about the process for approving the bonding to build the new school. Are we going to have to call another special town meeting? Is that what you said, before February 1st?
Well, the idea is if you object, you know, the idea is if you object, you would call a special town meeting, so that you would voice your opposition. But of course, there are people, there are people who are concerned about the proposed district-wide vote as a sort of fallback position, they really think that it should be decided by town meeting, because of the, sort of, the interest in democracy. But the problem is, is that we're pretty, everybody who's been following this issue is reasonably certain that that is not going to result in a unanimous vote among all the town meetings, because there are some member towns that are likely to voice opposition, which means that the, the building project is going to be dead unless we find another way to get approval, but.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I've, I've been saying that I would feel uncomfortable with, as a selectman, making that decision. I mean, I would rather have town meeting, this is a big bonding issue that's going to be expensive.
Right.
I'd rather have town meeting make that decision. I was always assuming it would be in a regular town meeting in April, if we have to call another special town meeting.
If it, if it's not at a, so first of all, again, this board has voted to support the bonding, to support bonding for the building project, and to support the district-wide vote. So I think by not calling a special town meeting, we would in part be supporting a district-wide vote, which I think is something, unless we changed our position on that. And I understand the concerns about us making that decision versus town meeting, but we're saying, you know, I think there are a lot of reasons to support a district-wide vote as opposed to individual town meeting votes, so I think I would feel comfortable with that, because we're not saying the people don't have a say at all, we're saying it should be a district-wide vote. And so, again, I think, while I appreciate what Vince has done here, I think that there are some things that aren't thought through, particularly around, you know, the part of leaving the district is that the Commissioner of Education has to approve anybody withdrawing from the district, and this proposal just sort of says, he'll agree to that. Well, that's not necessarily true at all. And I, you know, I, I don't think that, I think that this is a bit futile, A, and B, I think that we need to deal with the bonding issue, frankly, at this point separately from the regional agreement, and the towns had their chance to do the regional agreement first, and did not want to go through with that. Some towns voted it down, and others didn't take it up. So at this point, this is a very, there's a time-sensitive aspect to this, and I'm really in favor of doing it at a district-wide vote, and not at each town meeting, in part because I think that, that's more representative and democratic. And secondly, because I, I don't think one town, if, you know, 45% of the people at their town meeting support it, but 55 don't, they've killed this project. Whereas I think if we went to a district-wide vote, I think that you would find that the majority of the residents in the district would support it. And if they don't, then they don't, and that's fine, but we've then asked the majority of the residents individually, as opposed to letting one town, you know, or a few towns vote it down, when it's not, you know, it could be a pretty close margin at their town meeting. So I think that their idea is, is an interesting one, to sort of say, if you feel strongly about it, you know, kind of oppose and call a town meeting by February so we know, and then we'll go to a district-wide vote. Because otherwise, it's not going to happen, and it would be a huge mistake, a huge mistake for us to give up this opportunity, that would, it's extremely short-sighted, and would end up costing the people in the district, the towns in the district, more money trying to make repairs to a building that's falling apart, not useful, too big. And then I think, once we deal with this, then we move on and, and work on the, amending the regional agreement. So I, I concur with a lot of the issues that, and questions that Concord had, and, you know, frankly, I, I, I just don't, it's not that I, I think it's too hard to do this, I just don't think that it is the reasonable way forward. I think the reasonable way for it at this point is to focus on the building project, and to get, you know, an okay, again, from the majority of the residents in the, in the Minuteman District, as opposed to trying to do both of these at once, because frankly, again, if, if people wanted to do that, they could have, and instead, they nitpick on silly things and made it, you know, if you want to withdraw from the district, this amendment would have made it substantially easier to do that, and instead, they've made it harder for themselves. Why that's the route they chose, I don't know, but that is. And so it's sort of like, well, you know, live, live with that decision. And now we're going to vote, you know, now I think it's time to, to take an actual vote on a building that needs to happen, and then we can talk about amending the regional agreement, and whether or not people want to withdraw, but, that's just my opinion. Maybe I'm cranky, because it's late, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, that was basically the sentiment I expressed. I was sort of, I did go on, because I realized I was getting really hot, because I was so annoyed, I mean, I don't, not screaming, but I was just sort of so fed up with, with the people, the same people raising concerns, and getting, we're getting nowhere. And in the meantime, you know, the, the building is, you know, if they're, if they imagine that we're going to have another chance, you can just forget it, you know, and then, or if they imagine that, oh, it'll be fine, we'll all just find other homes for all our students, well, that's not going to happen, so. But the other thing is that, you know, I assume that if we end up going to district-wide ballot, first of all, there's going to be a lot of conversation, there's going to be a lot of public information sessions, there's going to have to be, and that's where, where, you know, you inform the public. And I assume that Minuteman will be doing the little dog and pony show to, to make that possible, and maybe Pam will, will, you know, have kind of gotten up to speed on some of the issues to be able to help out with that. But, you know, it's not as if we're going to just have a district-wide vote with no information proceeding, that there's going to be a lot of discussion leading up, leading up to that, so anyhow.
Okay.
Okay, good. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing it up.
I figured that we were supportive of moving forward the building project, and, you know, doing what we could, but I just had to check. Thank you.
Okay, number six, special tax assessment agreement. Mr. Manager?
Okay. Okay. Well, the, it turns out that after the town meeting last week, as, as you may recall, there is a, a state board called the Economic, EACC, Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, that approves applications for economic development improvement projects, of which the, the AES is, is, is one of those firms. And EACC is meeting in December. And we found out right after town meeting that all the application materials for the EDIP have to be submitted to the Mass Office of Business Development, there's a lot of anachronisms here, by this coming Friday. And one of obviously the key elements is an agreement on the special tax assessment where we can, we define what we want to see in exchange for the, for the tax incentive the town meeting approved last week. So I've been thinking about it. I did send the board, I think, Friday, just some of my thoughts as to what the elements of such an agreement should include. And council over the weekend incorporated those in, in, in kind of legalese, turned my thoughts into legalese, which is a little scary, but nonetheless. And so you have in front of you the, kind of the draft special tax assessment. And I should point out, this has not been shared with AES because I thought I wanted to get the board's feelings first before we sat down with them. And if we just walk through it, really starting with section one, which is AES's obligations. The first 1.1 talks about AES investing $3.1 million in the purchase, construction, renovation, and approval of the property. And we have included in here, the renovations will include energy efficient and environmentally sensitive components such as heat pumps, solar array, electrical storage, and other related initiatives, which is what they talked about at their, in their presentation. 1.2.
Can we just ask questions as we go along here?
Sure.
So I think, I think the purchase price was 2.8 million.
Right, they have some, they have some internal improvements, like just.
Right. So you're looking at a, that 300,000.
Yeah, 3.1 is the figure they gave M O B D.
So I had a question then, because is the tax assessment based on the 3.1 million? Or is it based on the assessed value?
Based on the assessed value.
2.5, okay.
Based on the assessed value, right. Because.
Because we just told people a lot of different numbers.
Well, but assessed value you've got to keep in mind is as of January 1 of any given year. So that.
Could change.
It ultimately will change. That's why all the numbers we used are kind of going to modulate somewhat because of changes. Number two, basically just states that they're going to transfer all their operations to this property by December 31, 2016. And they're going to conduct this, their operation for a minimum of 15 years, which we have talked about with them. Number three talks about the current workforce of 55 employees and increasing the workforce to 120 by June 30, 2017, and that they would maintain that level for the life of the STA. Now, number four is, is a thought I had, and I anticipate maybe some pushback in or negotiation with them. But AES would contribute $10,000 per year for 10 years to the town's transportation system, known as Cross Acton Transit. And we define when they would make the payments. And in all our discussions with AES, they, they did seem very interested in, in, in our transportation program, the need to maybe bring young engineers, et cetera, from Cambridge out, out to here. And as we all know, it's the last mile of that, of that transportation that's always a crucial issue. So we've asked them to contribute to that.
Can we pause on this one for a second?
Yeah.
Because I think it's worth getting some sense from the board. For, I had a couple of questions. I think the 10 years, I mean, it's great if they're willing to do it. But I'm wondering if maybe we include in there the ability to sort of, for you to negotiate it, because I think five years might be a little more reasonable, as that's the length of the STA. And so it might seem a bit more fitting to them. And then, and maybe this is kind of a question for you as well, Franny, but having it go to Cross Acton Transit as opposed to the more, the broader, you know, was there a thought about, because now we're remembering from what we learned, all the different names, Cross Acton Transit is the fixed route as opposed to doing it to the broader, you know, Cross Town Connect or whatever, so whatever we want to call it, so that it's servicing all of our public transportation as opposed to just the fixed route. I don't know what your thought was behind that, Steve, and then maybe you want to come.
Well, I guess our sense was that they would probably want to use the fixed route as opposed to others. But I mean, we never had that discussion with them. I mean, we're open to suggestions on that.
Franny, I thought it's a particularly.
I was thinking the same thing. But we don't even have a name unless it's Minuteman. We don't have a name. Maybe we need another.
Or do we just, do we just say the town's, maybe we just say the town's transportation system? Because keep in mind, we have a, we have an enterprise fund.
I was gonna say, could you say to the enterprise fund? Could they make a contribution directly to the enterprise? I don't know how.
I don't see why not. I don't see why not. I mean, we have a revolving fund and enterprise fund, but it would seem to me, we could put it in the enterprise. Well, the enterprise fund is more of a cross-town connect, though, isn't it?
Yeah, I did have that same thought.
I mean, I guess, I guess what I'm getting though is we should try to keep it somewhat flexible.
Yeah. And the thing about five or 10 years, I know Lexington does it, and we should really look at the way they do it, how many years for their new businesses. So.
I, yeah, I mean, what are you saying? It'd be 50,000 instead of 100,000 if you go over five years? What are you saying?
Yeah.
20 grand a year?
Oh, no, I, I was saying.
Have you talked to them about this?
Have not, no.
Not at all?
It's a number we made up.
This issue, this issue?
No, because I wanted to get the board's feeling.
I was saying 50,000. I was saying do 10,000 a year. I think it's a, it's quite a large contribution. But if we're, you know, giving them quite a large tax break as well, and part of the benefit to them of us doing this tax break is that they're then will receive some additional support from the state. So that it's not like a total loss for them. So I think that it's reasonable, and I would say 10,000 a year for five years.
One thing I liked about the 10,000 for 10 is it roughly equivalent, is equivalent to what the break we're giving them. It spreads it out for a longer period of time for them. Can you explain exactly what they get out of the state as part of this? I mean, what, does the state?
They get some form of tax credit. I don't know.
Tax credit from the state.
Right. Now, I don't know the scope of it. I would suspect that given the relatively small amount of improvements they have to make to the building, it's not going to be that much. I mean, I, I don't, I don't really have a sense of the scope of it, talking to Peter Milano, who's from, who's our rep on Mass Office of Business Development. He didn't think it was that significant a, a tax incentive for them.
Janet?
Yeah, I was, I had a question about the 10,000 for 10 years, because I thought, okay, 100,000. And yeah, but I was concerned about the fact that it would basically kind of offset the $125,000 tax incentive. And I thought, well, why would they, I mean, even if it's spread out, well, why not change the, the tax assessment instead of screwing around with this extra charge? But, but yeah, and I, I would like that to be a little more flexible. You can see how they react. And then, then I, my question was, okay, if you were giving it to CAT, was the thought that you would work with them to develop, you know, a, a fixed route shuttle for, for their employees coming from the train station? I didn't, you know, I didn't know why. Yeah, I was wondering why CAT. That wasn't something that you had in mind. It was just, okay.
So it sounds like perhaps we, if we okay this tonight, on this one, we make it a little, give you the ability to negotiate maybe between.
I will, I will say that depending on their reaction, we probably will need a special selectmen's meeting later on this week. You know, I mean, if, if in fact, there's some pushback on some of these elements from them.
You know, somebody asked me today, we came up in a meeting at work about how much I got paid for being a selectman. And somebody said, you know, have you ever thought about how much you get, you know, we're adding another meeting about how much you get paid per hour. And I said, no, I have thought about that before and realized that it would be too depressing of a calculation to make. Anyways, that's an aside for late at night. Adding an extra meeting sounds wonderful. Yes. So, right. I think, but I think general sense from us is, you know, obviously if, I think there's room for, for negotiating. And then if we could make the Cross Acton Transit, probably something a little broader, and maybe it's worth talking to the money guys about, you know, how to, how to.
Okay. 1.5, as you recall, he did offer up to 20,000 square feet of office space to the town at $10 a square foot, which included utilities. We have added in here that we would like to write a first refusal to lease up to 20,000 square feet at those, at that rate for a term of five years. Keeping in mind that there might be an opportunity for AB to rent some space there for the transportation office. And we have office space, we're renting it significantly more than $10 a square foot for both the recreation department and the engineering department. So we kind of, well, want to like, have the right of first refusal. I mean, we're, we're in a lease situation over at Nagog, I believe, till June. But we'd like that opportunity to, to look at this as an option. So we've kind of kept that as a right of first refusal.
Only thing to note there, you're missing the word years in the third line after five. Just want to make that clear.
Huh?
It's not an ambiguous five. Just as for a term of five.
Right.
You just want to make sure.
It'd be five centuries.
Just so they're not like, five, what?
Okay.
Yeah, five days, yeah, we hear that.
Okay. Number six, we just basically said that it's, it's kind of between them and AB and them and the Acton Water District to work out either bus parking or repair of the pavement. As I kind of jokingly said, I have brought both parties to meet with AES, I'm like a dating service, but I can't guarantee a long-term relationship. So that just kind of defines what our responsibilities is, are there. Number eight we threw in because, you know, they talked about hiring and, and looking at local, that we asked them to make reasonable efforts to hire qualified residents of Acton, qualified grads of AB, and qualified grads of Minuteman, Voc Tech for employment opportunities during the period of the STA. 1.9 asked them to make efforts to use local contractors for any construction improvements or renovations on the property. 1.10 asked them to develop a policy to cooperate with the Partnership for Skilled Workforce, the Metro Southwest Region, the Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, Minuteman Tech again. And we want three months' advance notice of any intent they have to transfer control of the business to a third party or to discontinue any of their operations. 112 asked them to provide a certain information, like the employment, employment levels, the number of town residents they're employed, how many local contractors they've used, a summary of their financial contribution to the town, including taxes, vehicles, water sewer fees, et cetera. And that they'd give us any information that they send to the Mass Office of Business Development in regard to the EDIP. Now, 13 basically says that if they don't mean any of their obligations of, of, of 1 through 15 above, or excuse me, 1, 1 through, 1.1 to 1.5 above, we may seek to decertify the STA with, with the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, and that they've got some appeal rights, et cetera, if, if we go ahead with that. Number 14, and this is something I, I kind of wanted to maybe hold our feet to the fire is too strong a word, but wanted to really define their, their, their commitment to the town for a long period of time. So 14 states that if, if they vacate the property or shift a majority of its operations outside the town, within five years, they'll pay back 100% of the special tax assessment. If they vacate the property or shift a majority outside of the town between six and 10 years, they'll pay back 50% of the, of the STA back to the town. So I don't know how they're going to react to that. But once again, I think it's, it's, you know, showing their commitment to the town. And then part two, section two is the town obligations, which is really what, what town meeting approved the other night. And that defines that. And there are going to be some other attachments that, that would show their contributions to transportation, et cetera, as well as what their special tax assessment would be that, that Brian is working on right now. So that's kind of how council incorporated my, my ideas.
Okay, questions or comments from the board? Janet?
I just have one question from paragraph 13, the last, well, the last few lines talking about if the number of employees actually retained falls between, below 100% of current employment levels. So is that 55 or whatever? I mean, right now, they're at 55, aren't they? And then the number of employees newly hired falls below 75% of what is required in this agreement. Now, they're supposed to go to 120, which means they're supposed to add, what is it, 65?
Right.
Employees. So if they fall below 75% of 65 new employees, then anyhow, that's, I just wanted to clarify that, the, the numbers that we're talking about. Okay.
Keep in mind that the, the EDIP, there are three or four criteria that qualifies a project for EDIP. And the one that suits us and this project the best is the creation of new jobs. And that's what we're hanging this whole thing on.
Okay. Yep, Franny?
Somebody from the Commission on Disabilities had written, there are certain conditions in which companies have to hire, 7% of their workforce has to be a person with disability. And is that possible to include? And, and I think you wrote back that that would be if they have federal.
They do, they, they are contracted to the federal government.
So that means that's, they have that no matter?
Correct.
What? And what happens when they don't? Do you know?
If they don't?
If they don't reach that 7%?
Well, they may lose their federal contract, I would assume.
Okay. Because then, then I don't have a comment on this.
Questions or comments from the audience? And I forgot to ask it about Minuteman. So if you have any questions or comments about what we talked about earlier, you may also do that down. I apologize. Jim.
Jim Snyder Grant. I'd like to see the, the bus parking just taken off the table. I mean, I remember spending time with this board and the other boards about Concord trying to do bus parking right near a zone two. And, you know, the risks that that was going to cause and the problems it was going to cause. And it was very clear to people that this was a bad idea. So here we are talking about bus parking in a zone two. You know, why would we deliberately move in that direction of putting our water at risk? So it seems like you found a strategy here where the, where the recovery of the money is going to be more about the transportation contribution. So if you take off this, the benefit of the, the financial benefit of the bus parking, you'll still be fine. So I just wanted to recommend that, that it, putting, putting the water at risk for this deal doesn't seem worthwhile. The other, the other was a question, which was the, the requirement that they put money into, you know, green-related energy-saving improvements. Was that seen as some sort of financial benefit to the town? Or was it more a sort of, it would be nice if they did that anyway?
I think it's more if they're nice if they did it anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. And Jim, I wanted to know, I think part of, well, why the bus thing came up in the first place is that the buses used to be parked at this location. And then I think a large part, I mean, we have gone back and forth about this because, you know, they, we did have concerns about Concord parking in zone two. But a lot of what we had concerns about with them as well was that they weren't talking about just parking, but also doing maintenance work there. But I think it is maybe something that we, as part of the matchmaking, want to make sure that the water district is maybe involved in those conversations to, to get their sense of it. But our, our thought was sort of extracting ourselves as the town from this and, you know, leaving it up to, to the region and AES. And, but perhaps maybe we put in something there about including or, or just verbally encourage including the water district. Because I do appreciate that.
Well, you know, the interesting thing is, is that you're dealing with two entities that have some, some interest here. I mean, obviously, the water district has access through there to get, to get to their, their property. And, you know, so obviously, they have interest in zone two. So I bet, you know, maybe the best approach is to have all three entities in the room at the same time and talk about it all.
Peter?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, there's already a parking lot there. So if something gets parked there, I don't think they need any more permits or anything. They could park the school buses there probably without, or I don't think the water district has anything to say about it particularly. I mean, I, I was wondering if we just took it out. I mean, I, I was wondering if we just took it out, they could always work these deals out. I mean, I guess it's probably better, if it's going to happen, that we have something in here about it, my guess, but, I mean, I don't think they need any permits to park there. There is a parking lot there.
I think the reason to have it in there too, I mean, we did talk about it at town meeting, and so part of me says, you know, we, that was part of what we sort of sold as the bill of goods, and so I think, you know, again, we're not requiring it in here, we're just saying, you know, negotiate with them, and, and maybe it is, I mean, we do say with the region and the Water District, only because there were two separate issues, but, you know, telling them that, you know, it's worth all three of them being in the room at once.
I think, I think another reason to have language like this in here is, is, you know, simply because, well, Richard, first of all, he's from France, okay, so, you know, he doesn't really see the distinction between the town, A B, Water District. So, I think having something that it kind of explains that is probably helpful.
There are people in town who don't see that difference.
(laughing) Franny versus-
Do our car, I have a question for our audience. Is-
The vast audience.
Is all of you, is anyone there who could say, is there a difference between buses and cars being parked? Because I'm thinking about if we have a use for a parking lot, if there's disagreement about buses, what about commuter parking lot? Anyway.
I mean, I don't know any, I don't know very much about vehicles, but my first thought is buses are, they're still diesel, right? Aren't they? Or are they not?
You know-
Probably, I don't know.
Do we know this? I don't know this.
I mean, down the road, they might be looking, I know, I know Concord's looking at alternative fuels, but I don't know if A B's looking at it or not.
You know, with Zone 2, like, why are you more worried about buses than cars? Please.
My understanding from talking very briefly with Matt Mostall of the Acton Water District about this earlier, is that the, the, the one incident, the, if you have a single incident with a single vehicle, if it's a bus, they, they have a much larger gas tank, so you just get a lot of gallons really quickly into, into the water before you can stop it.
Deborah Symes, tried to do my address, one on Icker Road, now that everyone knows where I live. So, yes, to what Jim said. Yay on clawbacks, really good idea. Oh my God, I'm so tired, I can't remember the third thing.
Sorry.
Hold up. Oh. So, Wednesday night, we are going to have our Green Acton Meeting at New View. Matt Mostall is going to be there to, to talk about water issues, and we're certainly going to ask him to comment on that, so that's just another venue if you guys, you know, want us to report back to you or whatever, know that that's happening, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be there.
Excellent. I think I have another meet, Janet, I think I have another meeting, but if I don't, I will also be there.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't think I'll be able to make it, but an email would be helpful. Probably have a meeting Thursday morning.
Yeah. I don't know when. Okay, any other questions or comments? So there's a proposed motion that we all have, if somebody would like, yep.
Explain that motion.
Yes.
This motion is written on the assumption that A E S will just love everything in this agreement, and that counsel and I can just clean up some of the stuff. So, in the eventuality that that happens, we're asking the board just give us the authority to clean up. If it doesn't, then I think we have to talk about a special meeting at some point.
Okay. So if people are comfortable with that, then would somebody be willing to make this motion?
And we can't just say we trust you to work it out?
Well, like, $10,000 for 10 years or whatever, or less is, probably I'm not something to really, I mean, I appreciate the faith, but I'm not real comfortable making that.
I mean, it does say substantially in the form presented, so, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't require that it has to be exactly this form, so I think it's understood that-
Something, I mean, in my mind, the two things they will, might have the biggest issue with are the transportation and then the, you know, if they, if they leave town, that either pay 100% or 50% back. I mean, I would think those might be the issues they would have the biggest hang-up on, and I think if they have pushback on that, I think we need to get together.
I agree.
So we can just, do you want us to move to approve this?
I can make comments after the motion.
Okay. Yes, if you could just read it.
What?
If you could just read the motion.
You want me to move pursuant to Article 6 of the special town meeting held on November 10, 2015, just last week, that the Board of Selectmen approved the special tax assessment agreement between the Town of Acton and Associated Environmental Systems, Inc., concerning the real estate located at 8 and 10 Post Office Square in Acton, shown as parcel 59-2 on Town of Acton Atlas Map E4 and parcel 2 on Town of Acton Atlas Map F4, substantially in the form presented to the board this evening, with such final changes as the town manager in consultation with Town Council may approve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
And then, you had a comment, Franny?
Yeah, um, no, I forget. Oh, yeah, we, we didn't really answer the comments that were made about the school buses, whether we're changing what we say about it or not. I mean, did we respond?
Well, under this motion, we're not, I think the sense was, you know, we, within this, we're not guaranteeing anything, and we're sort of, you know, encouraging them to discuss with the district and the, the regional school district and the Water District, and then as Peter pointed out, there's not really, because there's a parking lot already there, they don't have to get special permission regarding bus parking, and then, I mean, the point about how we presented it to town meeting as well, so there's, you know, worth including it for that reason, but-
Okay.
If people feel substantially otherwise.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, the Water District eventually did buy into the permit for parking on, on, you know, crossing, crossing the town land and getting into the Concord land, which is in our Zone 2. We had wells installed, test wells, that they agreed to, and I think the condition was no, no maintenance on the site, so if the school were going to work out a deal with the company to park on the property, I would hope that they would incorporate those kind of controls, the same things that we put on that site in off of, you know-
Knox Trail.
Knox Trail down, so.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay.
Should I sign this?
Yeah, why don't you, we'll sign your copy.
So, a special meeting on Thursday, hopefully we won't need it, but-
That would be the day.
I think I need to post something.
Yep.
Do you mean Thursday morning or Thursday night? Because Thursday night, right here-
Thursday night's not great.
I was, I was going to make an announcement as part of selectmen's reports.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
But Thursday night here, 6:30 to 8:45, is the local planning, the magic subregion of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. This year's study is about climate change resilience, and so there's a special forum one time during the year. There's a working group that's working about four times a year, along with the staff of Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and at this forum, it's a public forum, Thursday night, how do we prepare for a changing climate, local planning for climate resilience? It's November 19, 6:30 to 8:45, in this room, room 204, Acton Town Hall. 6:30 to 7 is networking and refreshments, 7 to 8:45 are speakers, presentations, and discussion. So it's 13 towns assessing vulnerabilities to climate impacts, for example, increased precipitation, inland flooding, increasing temperatures and drought, and public input is essential, so we really want people to come to that. So that said, maybe we could work out our selectmen meeting around that 6:30 to 8:45 time.
Well, I'm wondering if we could, I mean, I'm double booked that night already, and getting-
Yeah, I'm not, I'm assuming that everybody would be coming.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we could do a, an A M. meeting on Thursday, if that generally works for people.
Yeah. That's better.
Any big conflicts? Are you open?
Good morning.
Yeah.
I'd be somewhere at 9 o'clock with us.
If we did like a 7:30?
We should be.
Do 7:30? So do you, could we post it tomorrow as a just in case?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to, I'm sending an email right now to post it, so email's dated, I mean, done right now, so.
Yeah, today, yeah, yeah, right, because we got to get that on there. Okay, so we'll have a just in case.
A very simple agenda, finalize special taxes, et cetera.
It gets posted 48 hours ahead of time.
Right. Well-
Well, could they post it by?
They don't open until 9:00, 9:30.
They open at 8.
8?
Yeah.
We could do it at 8.
Want to do it at 8?
So can they get it posted at 8?
Better say 8:15. I hope they post it as soon as they get here.
Can you, can you, can you send the notice to Eva at home?
I'll try, I don't know if she's-
Tell her to get in early.
So Franny can't do that day, I mean, we just need a majority.
Okay, yeah.
The other thought would be Friday morning.
Well, we got to get a whole packet in on Friday.
You have to get it in by Friday.
I mean, we could do Friday, but-
If Ching Sun can come.
Yeah, or even if the three of us can.
And I could also call in, because the thing I'm going to starts at 8:30, so.
So if we did 8:15 and-
8:15 on the 19th?
See, just make sure they post it by 8:15 tomorrow.
I will make sure it's posted by 8:15 tomorrow.
But, very urgent in the title. Okay. Excellent. Are there anything, I don't think the reports actually made it in there, but we'll make sure they get added to the packet, and just a reminder to do your reports. Peter? Okay, I know. Anything else? All right, then can I have a motion to adjourn?